I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of January 19, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. Our first order of business is a proclamation, and I will be making the presentation. Whereas, human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state wherein victims are forced to work on various forms of labor, exploitation, and other services that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, due to the isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. And whereas, it is estimated that more than 40 million people around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas, human trafficking victims face a cruelty that has no place in a civilized world, a crime that can only take many forms, one that debases our common humanity and violates where the United States stands as a country. And whereas, increased education about how to identify human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of in-state resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation can help decrease the number of future victims. And whereas, Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role of all San Maria residents play in preventing, reporting, and adjudicating these anus crimes. Now therefore, I, Allison Patino, Mayor of the City of San Maria, does hereby recognize January 2021 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the City of San Maria, and encourages businesses and residents to educate themselves on the issue and report suspicious activity. It's been witnessed, and I have set heretofore my hand and caused the seal of the City of San Maria to be affixed this 19th day of January 2021. And this will be sent to... Who gets that? Domestic Violence Solutions, I believe that goes to... There it is. It goes to the North County Rape Crisis Center. Allison Wales, Associate Director. We'll make sure that she gets this. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
Yes. First, I will ask that if there are interested individuals who wish to speak during public comment, please be prepared to raise your hand now in the Zoom meeting or press *9 by telephone to be called on in the order received. Additionally, speakers who wish to speak on Item 3E relating to sidewalk vendors on the consent calendar should also be prepared to raise your hand now in the Zoom meeting to speak on that item. Now, this is the time that is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Madam Mayor, we have received a number of written comments regarding Consent Calendar Item 3E, the adoption of the ordinance regulating sidewalk vendors, from Lisa Schwartz, Janet Rios, Kathleen Shara, each opposed to the ordinance, Maria Aguilera of Wilshire Health and Community Services, and Sandra Dickerson wrote in support of the ordinance. And we will have 12, I believe, 12 speakers. Let me see. Right now, we have seven speakers who have their hands raised to speak for a public comment. And Madam Mayor, I will call on Rebecca Garcia first, followed by Eduardo Garcia.
Excuse me, do we not have any public comment for the regular public comment?
That's what this is, yes.
For the regular public comment?
Yes, because there are a number of people that want to speak on the consent items, which is typically left for council members to speak on. So, public members would speak during public comment.
Okay.
Rebecca, are you available to speak at this time? I'm going to give you a moment. Eduardo Garcia, can you hear us? Eduardo, can you hear us? Let me just go down the line, just to make sure that this isn't an issue of ours. One moment. I'm going to give it a moment here. I'm going to have you pause.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure if I can hear us, but...
I think we figured it out. We've got it now. I apologize. Let's go back, and we'll get started with Rebecca Garcia.
Hello?
Yep. Can you hear us now? Can we hear you?
Yes. Am I speaking on Item 3?
You are actually speaking during public comment, and that's because it's a consent item, and council members are the only ones that talk during that time. So, we have you speak during public comment.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so I'll proceed then.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for the space. My name is Rebecca, and I'm here to urge the City Council reconsidering the proposed ordinance, and listen to the community members who would be impacted. After the first reading, multiple City Council members showed support in moving forward with the ordinance because of anecdotes that were shared that don't necessarily represent the broader street vendor community. We ask that the city hold a public workshop for the full spectrum of residents impacted, so that the City Council can assess the ordinance fairly. I'd also like to point out a few things that the City Council should remember during this process to uphold the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act of California. In the last meeting, comments were made in support of the ordinance, referring to floors, I think, a couple of times. And I would just like to remind you that we need to focus on things that don't necessarily regard competition, because the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act notes that that's not necessarily something that qualifies as a reason to make extra regulations that are not necessary. Aside from that, we fundamentally disagree with the ordinance's current focus on punitive measures. They unnecessarily increase policing and push vendors into an underground economy, which is what we want to stay away from. Sorry, I can't find my notes here. There. The city cannot create regulations based on perceived economic competition either. So, talking about, you know, that floors in front, or street vendors that are selling flowers in front of brick-and-mortar businesses aren't necessarily reasons to move forward either. We want to remember the people that are being impacted, which is, you know, beyond those specific communities. Requiring a live scan of street vendors also criminalizes their work and borders on discriminatory, as California recognizes that a majority of street vendors belong to low-income and immigrant communities. The city right now doesn't require a live scan of other/ all businesses, so why would we implement this on our street vendors? So, I just want to remind you that we're here to serve the whole community, and keep in mind the people that are going to be impacted, not just, you know, the people that come up in anecdotes or stories, you know, on the tip of our mind. We want to include everyone. So, I urge the City Council to note that as they move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Next, we have Mr. Eduardo Garcia, followed by Allison Wales.
Okay, hello?
Hello?
Hi there. So, my name is Eduardo Garcia. I'm just trying to, you know, represent on the floor side of things. My parents, you know, they were, you know, they have their own shop and everything like that, locally here, but, you know, local business, things like that. The main concern on our end is basically, like you guys mentioned right now, it's not necessarily our competition or anything like that. It's more about, we want the ordinance to move forward. Just because, just the things that are going on right now, certain owners here on the floors themselves, they have to basically get a second job just to provide for their family the way things are right now, and that just doesn't really seem fair with, you know, with everything going on right now. Well, I'm not sure if we would be able to come up with a solution or anything like that, you know, especially with the upcoming holidays, like Valentine's, things like that. Those are like the main, you know, those are like the biggest days, you know, for us, basically, just trying to, you know, keep, you know, everything going, you know, throughout the year, things like that. It's not trying to push them away or anything like that, but, you know, there should be some type of, you know, solution where, you know, everyone, you know, is happy and present.
Okay. Is that all you had to comment, Mr. Garcia?
At the moment, yes.
Okay, thank you. Allison Wales, followed by Kate Adams.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Allison Wales, and I'm the Associate Director of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. I would first like to thank you on behalf of the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force for the proclamation you've just read. So, it is said that when you know better, you do better. And for the original members of the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force and many, many other community organizations to follow, this is so very, very true regarding human trafficking. That includes sex and labor trafficking, as well as our work with CSAT, which is commercially sexually exploiting children. The task force is a collaboration between county agencies, nonprofits, and faith-based organizations that have forged paths since 2013 to provide safe housing, counseling, various resources, education, and prevention programs to the entire county. We continue to grow in our collaboration and strengthen by the support that our local cities and county government provides to all of the organizations. While January is recognized as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and the task force alone, whose partners have several events planned for this month via virtual events, it is not the only time of year that we present education and prevention programs. Since 2017, over 120 meetings were conducted with over 2,700 participants, of which 503 were our law enforcement partners alone. Education regarding previous assumptions, automatic beliefs, and even verbiage in describing the victims is the only way we truly learn how to understand and help the survivors. The task force also provided over 120 outreach and prevention programs across the county. And this continued, while these numbers are not included, this continued even this year during so much virtual education took place. Many people want to believe this is not a problem that is brought up. This problem was brought to our county from Vegas or other parts of the 101. But the fact is, it is local people who are buying and selling, our local women and girls, and even boys, I need to emphasize, young men are also victims in our community. Since 2017, of 173 investigations, this is strictly law enforcement investigations, 51% of the traffickers were from Santa Barbara County. 92% of those people were locals buying the local buy-in. From these investigations, of 176 survivors, 43% were from Santa Barbara County. And this was the most startling point, is that 31% were 17 and younger, as young as 12 or younger we have worked with. Please note that this number does not necessarily include all the possible victims that have been identified by community agencies. Schools, families have also reached out through red, because they've noticed several red flags and behavior of people and things going around, possibly that may have simply helped for them in the beginning.
Thanks.
I would have let her speak anyway after that.
There will be a virtual vigil on the 28th of this month, and again, thank you for all your support.
Allison, don't go away. This is Councilmember Etta Waterfield.
Yes.
If you could please email me the stats of what you just read, I would like to discuss this with Ben Hayes in the morning at 8:00.
I will, to you or to the City Clerk?
Just go ahead and mail it to me, ewaterfield@cityofsantamaria.org.
Okay, I can definitely do that.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Allison, I'm sorry I didn't call on you after I read the proclamation, because that's what I usually do. And a lot of times, since we've been, you know, shutting down on the COVID thing, we don't have a lot of people on the line. So, please pardon me for that.
Oh, and one more thing. Where is the vigil on the 28th?
It is going to be, it's a virtual one. We're recording it now.
Oh, virtual, okay.
We've recorded some things with some of our, the Good Stand Shelter, the Safe House that is there in San Maria. We've done some recording of their art stuff that we do and other places. So, it's a recording, and then we'll be releasing it on the 28th.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh huh.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Allison. We appreciate that. Our next speaker was going to be Kate Ms. Adams? Let's go to Ms. Juana Gomez.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. We'll come back to Ms. Adams.
As well as other flower shops, we are actually hoping that this ordinance gets moved forward. And I did hear comments that it was racially motivated. I just wanted to clear that up. It is not racially motivated. It's not about social status or anything, because most of the business owners here in Santa Maria who do own flower shops are immigrants and towns, and they are Hispanic. So, I just wanted to clear that up, that it's not racially motivated, rather than more of fairness. These business owners, you know, they pay their rent, they pay the IRS, they pay taxes, they make sure that they have good and fair working conditions for their employees. When I have seen firsthand children out there selling on the street, you know, we're not trying to criminalize what they do, but we are trying to not only benefit, you know, the city of San Maria, but these workers as well. These children are out there for hours on days, and we don't see anyone coming over maybe to switch their shifts or allow them bathroom breaks. Honestly, I haven't seen them eat, maybe they do. But with passing this ordinance, I feel that not only would benefit the city of San Maria, because there would be not only more income coming into San Maria, you know, helping pay taxes, helping with resources in the city, but also would benefit them, because it would allow them a fair payment. You know, it would allow them to use this as something to benefit them, to be able to file taxes, be able to do more than just sell out on the street. And if it is about, you know, human trafficking, which we did hear rumors of, then it would also help with figuring out who is bringing these people here. Like I said, it's not racially motivated, it's not social status, you know, it's none of that. It's more that we just want the fairness that, you know, as business owners, they deserve. They pay, like I said, they pay the city whenever they do want to go outside to sell. They do the paperwork, they go to the city, they get the permits, you know, they wait to make sure that the city approves, and they pretty much do everything that has to be done. When these, these street vendors, you know, regardless of race, ethnicity, age, or social status, they pretty much come into the city, do what they have to do, and leave. There is no benefit to this city. There is no, how would you call it? There is nothing that, you know, we can say, oh, it's benefiting this city, what they're doing. Essentially, it is hurting this city, because the taxes that would essentially save the city are getting lost.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is, I'm going to see here if Kate is available. Kate, are you available?
Yes, I am available.
Oh, there you go. Yes, we can. Thank you. And then, we'll follow your comments by Ms. Molly Schiff.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, by Victoria Garcia.
Correct. Okay. So, dear Mayor and City Council members, I've read the City Attorney's recent Street Vendor Ordinance memo, and I've reviewed some of the last City Council meeting's discussion about the ordinance. And I'm speaking today to inform my district's council member, Mr. Cordero, and the council at large of my concerns about both. First, a question. Why is the City Council discouraging economic activity in the city during a pandemic-inspired economic crisis? Now is not the time to pit street vendors against other enterprises or to discourage street vendors from competing for their own survival and the support of their family with unnecessary or prohibitive rules and ordinances. Two, I think the City Attorney's anecdotes about flower street vendors at the last City Council meeting deserve scrutiny. In particular, the anecdotes and the ordinance need to include objective data and findings as per California State Sidewalk Vending Act before attempting to further regulate street vendors or one category of street vendors. And to counter anecdote with anecdote, my own interactions with and purchases from flower street vendors have been safe, friendly, convenient, and involve no violations of vehicular or ambulatory curb sidewalk or traffic regulations. Finally, going after street vendors to protect brick-and-mortar businesses is wrong-headed and suggests an us-versus-them mentality that sadly and too often colors the city's responses to the emerging complexities of our city's demographics and economic landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Ms. Schiff. Ms. Schiff, are you available?
Oh, yes.
There you go.
Wonderful. I am speaking today on behalf of the San Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce in support of two agenda items you guys have listed. The first is 3E, the ordinance regarding sidewalk vendors. While the Chamber appreciates the entrepreneurial spirit and the need for families to make a living, it is not fair to our local brick-and-mortar businesses that others are able to operate unregulated. The Chamber supports all local businesses, and we believe that all businesses deserve a level playing field. The city has proposed what we believe to be a very fair set of regulations that would ensure sidewalk vendors play by the same kind of rules that all brick-and-mortar businesses do. The Chamber strongly supports the ordinance regulating sidewalk vendors. And then, the second issue I wanted to speak on was Agenda Item 3D, which is the resolution supporting safe business operations during COVID-19. And this is another resolution that the Chamber highly supports. As a champion for our local business community, the Chamber believes that businesses are able to operate safely while adhering to COVID-19 safety protocols. The data that has been shared does not support the idea that continued business shutdowns will achieve everyone's goal, namely overcoming the COVID pandemic. We have yet to be shown evidence that keeping businesses closed is helping reduce the spread of COVID-19 in our community. We ask that local and state officials work together with our businesses and consider the economic impact shutdowns are having on both our local businesses and our community. We strongly support the idea that we can keep people safe while also operating businesses safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schiff. Let's see, who did we last have on our, Ms. Garcia, Victoria Garcia. Are you available to speak? I think you're muted, Ms. Garcia. There you go. I hear you now.
¿Habla español?
Yes. See.
¿Habla español?
No, pero usted puede hablar en español. I'm speaking for you. ¿Puedes hablar?
Mi pregunta mía era esto. Estamos hablando acerca de los vendedores, ¿verdad?, que están en las esquinas vendiendo. Yo tengo un punto de vista, como yo que estoy en Donovan and Broadway. Hay tres personas vendiendo en la zona donde yo estoy, que no es, yo estoy... vamos a decir que en menos de 100 pies tengo tres vendedores, ¿verdad? Mi pregunta es esta: ¿cómo me pueden ayudar en eso? Porque es gente que no es de Santa María, es gente que viene de fuera, nada más vienen a vender lo que es viernes, sábado, y domingo, y se van. Ellos están llevando el dinero a otra ciudad, porque no son de Santa María. Entonces, yo en esa parte, por eso estoy hablando, porque yo tengo mi negocio Donovan y Broadway. Entonces, entonces, cómo nosotros estamos pagando taxis, el permiso, y ellos, ¿qué está pasando ahí? Ahorita nosotros, a la colección nos mandó la carta de que ya tenemos que poner el reporte, ya lo hicimos, quedamos en un plan de pagos, porque dos meses nosotros con esta pandemia se cerró. Entonces, nosotros tuvimos que pagar la renta, y ahorita con los taxis, yo hablé y le dije, mire, ahorita está muy despacio. Allá en Ventura, los que me atendieron, ellos me dijeron que ellos podían ayudarnos, ellos iban a mandar unos oficiales, este, para que los pudieran ayudar, porque aquí en Santa María no está. Yo le dije, aquí en Santa María no está haciendo nada. Entonces, ustedes me dicen que yo tengo que liquidar los taxis, pero si está muy despacio, ¿qué voy a hacer? Entonces, le dije, ¿hay personas que ellos nada más, este, los días que nosotros no vendemos, ellos están? Y no se ponen lejos, están muy cerquitas del negocio, ¿qué va a pasar?
Gracias, señora.
Okay, I can share some of the points.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Ms. Garcia, she owns a business on Donovan and Broadway. She mentioned that she has three flower vendors in less than 10 feet away from her business. She's basically selling in front of her business, and she's asking for help, how we can help them, because she mentioned that these people come from other cities, so the money is leaving the city and not staying here. She mentioned that she pays taxes and the services and everything, and it's unfair that the others don't. And she closed, her business closed for two months during the pandemic, so now she's trying to find ways to, different ways to pay the taxes and all the stuff that the government is asking her to pay as a business owner. So, she's requesting her help.
I think she also mentioned that they are here Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then they leave.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. She mentioned that during the good days for her business, those are the days that they show up, and then they take off.
Okay, thank, thank you. Mr. Escobedo.
Madam Mayor, it looks like we have one more speaker, Anna Presidio.
Okay.
Ms. Presidio, are you available? Ms. Presidio, you need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sí. Mi nombre es Ana Prestián, ¿usted puede escuchar?
Sí.
Hello?
Sí, la escuchamos.
I don't think she can hear us.
Okay.
Can you hear, okay?
Sí, está bien.
Hello, mi nombre es Ana Prestián, estoy con una negociación de flores. Mi intención de llamar este día con ustedes es hablar sobre los vendedores ambulantes de flores especialmente, y hacerles ver a ustedes y saber en qué nos están afectando. A mí personalmente me están afectando en, en la integridad mía, ya que mi familia depende de los ingresos de esa florería, y pues las ventas están muy, muy bajas por la pandemia. Tuvimos que cerrar alrededor de dos meses. Y pues, hay que seguir pagando renta, hay que seguir pagando luz, electricidad. Todos los pagos, nosotros como trabajadores independientes, no tenemos ningún beneficio ni de desempleo, ni apoyo a nuestros negocios. No tenemos apoyo de nadie. Yo personalmente no veo ningún apoyo de la Ciudad de Santa María, de las autoridades de la Ciudad de Santa María. Cuando yo como contribuyente apoyo a esta ciudad al 100%, ya que pago mis impuestos puntualmente cada año, pago mi licencia de negocio. En fiestas grandes como 14 de febrero, Dia de las Madres, nosotros tenemos que pagar un permiso para que la ciudad nos permita dejar una mesa afuera de nuestro negocio. Entonces, no se me hace a mi justo que yo tenga que pagar todo eso y esté contribuyendo a la ciudad, dejando mis taxis en la ciudad, que son impuestos que benefician para muchos programas, parques, incluso para el salario de las autoridades de Santa María. Este, que vengan personas ajenas a esta ciudad a llevarse el dinero de impuestos porque ellos no los pagan, los están llevando a otra ciudad, y eso también me afecta a mí. Porque tal vez podría haber más programas y más cosas que puedan beneficiarme a mí, a mi familia, y a todos, a ciudadanos de Santa María, y no lo estamos viendo. Entonces, mi... Mi petición para ustedes este día es que hagan algo por nosotros, que nos ayuden. Y pues, si no pueden hacerlo, pues también que nos digan para tratar de buscar otra solución. Pero confiamos en ustedes, y necesitamos líderes como ustedes que nos escuchen, pero que también nos apoyen. Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Gracias señora. Go ahead, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, she's a flower, uh, flower shop vendor, business owner, independent business owner. She's mentioning, she mentioned how this can be, the flower vendor has been affecting her business. Uh, she's concerned because during this pandemic, the, these street vendors have been affecting her family because the business, everything that comes inside, from the business, basically, that pays the bills at home, and take care of their kids and their families. They, she mentioned that she closed two months during the pandemic, but that doesn't mean that she stopped paying taxes, paying rent, and the services. And she feels, she says that the city of Santa María is not supporting the, the people that pay the bills, pay the taxes. Also mentioned that on February 14, she paid extra tax so she can sell outside her business. And she finds unfair that, that people that pay taxes, so we can put programs in the city and even pay the staff, the city staff, it's not, um, we're not protecting them. And she's asking for help. And even, she mentioned that, tell us if, if we're not gonna receive your support so we can start finding other ways to, um, to get an income. And she says, yeah, she, she wants us to listen to them and support them, and so the money stays here in Santa María.
Thank you. Okay, is that all of the public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have specific comments, but Mr. Watson could respond to the comments made relative to Item 3E.
Madam Mayor, very quickly, I appreciate all the comments from both sides of this issue. I wanted to speak directly on Ms. Adams' comment that certain findings are required by the Sidewalk, Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, which is actually not true. We did vet the ordinance that we proposed against that state law and find it consistent. Additionally, we do want to make sure that people understand this is not discriminatory, nor is it intended to target any particular business or occupation, but rather, it is a common sense regulation of folks that are vending in our community to make sure there's a level playing field. That's what was proposed, and we, again, request the council pass it.
Thank you. You know, it came to me this afternoon that during the Elks Rodeo Parade or the Christmas Parade, we have these vendors that come in, they don't get licensed, and our, our police officers are out there picking it up. I was, I was just thinking about that. So it's just, it's just trying to put everyone on the level playing field, and everyone is treated equally. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clark, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have an item they wish to pull for discussion?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Item 3D and Item 3E for a separate vote and discussion.
3B and 3E?
3D.
D. Okay. Yes.
Item 3D is adopt a resolution to support safe business operations during the COVID-19 pandemic. And Item 3E, being called per separate vote, is to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 2021-01, adding Chapter 420 to Title IV of the Santa Maria Municipal Code Regulating Sidewalk Vendors.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to make a, a motion?
Sure.
Omitting 3C and 3?
3D.
3D and 3E.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar omitting Items 3D and 3E.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3D and 3E. Madam Clark, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Okay, Item 3D, can you read that into the?
Item 3D is adopt a resolution to support safe business operations during COVID-19 pandemic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as I read this resolution, I had to pull it, had to pull it aside for a separate vote and a discussion, given the times that we are in. Um, I completely understand the importance of supporting our businesses during this time, and I understand the frustration that a lot of our businesses are facing right now, especially given the lack of, the little support being received by the federal government. At a time when we should be centering, putting forward, and passing centered people bailouts and, and, and supporting small businesses during this time of the pandemic, the opposite is happening. Um, we are seeing that through, through just the leadership at the federal level and, and, again, the little support that, that businesses and individuals are receiving, and how it trickles down to the local level. But I will say that, as, as much as I understand the desperation and the concern that a lot of our business owners have here in the city of Santa María, as well as parents, you know, the importance of wanting to send their kids back to school, we do have to recognize that COVID-19 rates are, are, are exponential right now. I mean, just last week, we saw articles in the news talking about how the county of Santa Barbara had the highest positivity rate in, in, in this county than any other place in the state. And so I, you know, if this resolution were to be coming before us at a, at a different time when the rates of COVID-19 transmission weren't as high, I would be in support of it. But given the time and given, again, the, the spread, it, it, it's, it's really concerning to me to see this resolution come forth, especially when we're seeing businesses being defiant of the current public health order.
Okay, did you want to talk about 3E now?
Sure.
Okay.
3E, that's, is the...
The ordinance regulating the sidewalk vendors, sidewalk vendors.
Okay. Um, so going back to, or going back to Item 3E, I just want to make note that Senate Bill 946 allows additional restrictions on, on street vending if they are related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. However, the ordinance that's before us, I would say, does not qualify as an objective concern, especially given that we are putting in place background checks. No one here on the city council, including myself, is against regulating street vendors. We need to make sure that they are regulated. We need to make sure that they do come out of the shadows. And we need to make sure that, that, that we, that we support entrepreneurship even at the smallest level. However, by us putting in place a requirement such as a background check that not all other businesses in the city of Santa María have to go, have to do, is absurd. And it's just, it's just another way of, of, of governmental oversight for a certain particular business. And if the concern is really about workers' rights, human trafficking, then let's address that and not impact small entrepreneurship. I mean, let's call it for what it is. I mean, this ordinance is very clear about what type of businesses they don't want in the city of Santa María. By the way, by the way that this ordinance was written, again, no one here is saying that, that businesses, businesses should not pay their taxes, or that businesses should participate in illegal activity, or that businesses shouldn't be regulated. That's not what we're saying here at all, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is that during a time of COVID-19, when, when, again, communities are suffering, people are struggling to make a living, why are we going to put additional burdens and barriers for people to be able to make ends meet? That is unacceptable. And again, our focus, just like I said with the previous item, our focus, the federal government's focus, should be on bailing out people, small businesses, not, not these crazy airline companies that, you know, are stealing off people anyways. I mean, if the concern is, again, about, you know, people not paying their fair share, you know, audience, if you're listening, check out how much the top 1% is paying in their taxes. You're paying more in taxes at the top 1%. Again, if the concern is around, you know, businesses not being regulated, let's make sure that we are regulating businesses but not adding additional burdens or barriers that other businesses, or hurdles that other business owners don't have to jump through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 3D and 3E.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, is, is it, if I have some comments about 3E?
I, I need a, I need a second, and then we'll discuss it. If I don't have a second, then we don't talk about it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second, and discussion. Okay, Mr. Escobedo, go ahead. This is on 3E?
3E.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that I, I support this regulation, this ordinance, because that doesn't mean that we're going against the small entrepreneur or against the small business or against the middle. I think that the most important thing that we have to keep in mind is people. When we talk about small businesses, as I was taking notes from the people that talked, we're not talking about an institution. We're talking about somebody who paid the bills for their families, for their kids, people that are trying, are having to find a second job to, to compensate a little bit the, the income. So here are some of, during these weeks, I've been conducting a little bit of an investigation. I, I'm one of those guys that like to be out there in the community. So I was walking, and here are some of the, I have opportunity talking with flower vendors, with, with the loteros, with all, all of them. I, and I really, it was really interesting, some of the things I found. First, the workers does not, they, they don't have a wage guarantee. They're based, they're based on how much they sell. I had a conversation with a flower vendor, and he was showing me that if he sells $10 thing, he gets $2. But if he doesn't sell during the day, he goes back home with nothing. So he can be there all day. From, he was drop at 8:30 in the morning. He was picked up at, I think it was around 7:30 PM. So in that time, if that person doesn't sell, he doesn't get anything. And by the way, he's not an entrepreneur. He was, he's employed by somebody in Bakersfield. And he has a name, Arturo, by the way. And, and there's nothing, there's something that really concerns me, that it's the rights, the integrity of those, of the people that is out there. And... There was a lotero, Antonio. I was talking with him, and I bought some stuff, we were chatting, eating some, some takis, we chilling, and he was mentioning that he, he doesn't own the car. Somebody owns not two, not three, not 10. He was talking about a business that has at least 30 cars on the street. So when we talk about supporting our community, it's about this. It's about trying to find, support entrepreneurship. I think that's, that's, that's a key. But are we really supporting entrepreneurship when we live, when we allow somebody having a group of 50 people going there? And by the way, he was showing that he, he, basically, he works all day, and at the end of the day, he has to pay half of everything that he sells back to the guy. So there's somebody taking advantage of our community. I know that when we talk about eloteros, and personally, it was grown in, in Mexico. I was surrounded by eloteros, I was surrounded by all of these, and I love them. And I, I understand when, you know, I, I saw the Facebook posts, I, I, I receive phone calls, and I understand that's part of an identity, it's part of a culture, and it seems even a little bit romantic to talk about that. But what kind of businesses we want here in Santa María? What kind of jobs, what kind of way of living do we have here in Santa María? We have two options here. We can either look to the other side and let this happen, and maybe end up in something worse. I actually had a conversation with a business owner that was setting, she ended up selling stuff on the street as well. And she shared with me that she set up on Main and Bro, no, Donovan and Broadway for three days, and she earned $1,000. $1,000 for three days, that's a lot of money. And eventually, somebody, she called a, a guy with a cholo, kind of like, with a, this guy approached with a radio pretending he was a cop, a police officer, talking in quotes, telling them that, oh, do you have a permit? Show it to me, harassing them. So I'm telling you, I have seen it before. I have seen it, and that doesn't get any better. So if we want to support Santa María, if we want to support our community, we have to be able to put first the, the people. Not even talking about businesses, it's about our community. And if they want to come here in Santa María, do business here, that's okay. Everybody has that, that drive. But let's do it in a way that first, put the person, nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would, ma'am. Um, you know, I, I think Councilmember Escobedo brings an excellent point, right? Like, who are these vendors? These vendors are women, senior, parents, they are micro businesses. They are microbusiness owners. And again, if the concern is about making sure that taxpayer dollars get spent here and stay here, then, then let's address that. The, the issue here, and I did speak with the Senator Monique Lee Moon's office earlier this morning about this particular ordinance, and how the state, her office also does have concerns about, you know, whether this ordinance, the background check piece, actually qualifies as an objective concern. You know, it, it, again, it really comes down to, are we trying to impose additional barriers that are not being imposed onto other businesses? Right? Again, if the concern is workers' rights, if the concern is about, you know, taxes being left here in Santa Maria, then let's address that. But that's not being addressed in this ordinance.
Thank you. No further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I, we've got a first and a second.
We've got a first and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have our annual January appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and begin the staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First, though, I will ask that if there are any interested individuals who wish to speak during the city council appointments, boards, and commissions, and committees item, please be prepared to raise your hand now in the Zoom meeting, or press star nine by telephone to be called on in the order received. Moving on, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the city council will consider making appointments to the Landmark Committee, the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Recreation and Parks Commission. Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll be giving the staff report if you want me to go ahead.
Yes, I'll be fine.
Forward. Let's see, I do have two hands raised in our comments. Ignacio Zacharias and Shannon Dickerson, are you interested in speaking on boards and commissions? You're muted at this time. I'll move on to Shannon Dickerson? She looks like she put her hand down. Okay, so we'll move along then. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the request before you this evening is to make appointments to the committees, commissions just mentioned. Oops. Okay. I'll present each one at, each one at a time for consideration of the appointments and the city council's ratification. The first one on our list this evening is, I'm sorry, is the Landmark Committee, which has four vacancies currently. One application was received from incumbent Jim Zemaitis. Following the mayor's nomination, the appointment would be made by the mayor with ratification by the city council. There were no other applications received for those vacancies. The committee will continue to advertise, to fill the vacancies until each one is full.
Thank you. So I will, I will make a motion to appoint Edwards, Edwards Zemaitis to the Landmark Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I, I thought, I, I thought so.
Councilmember Waterfield, sorry.
You're the one that's supposed to keep me in line.
I get out of order when you go first.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, moving along. Next one is the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee. We currently have three vacancies. Three applications were received from the incumbents Trent Benedetti, Jack Owen Jr., and Donna Randolph. One new application was received from Kathy Ortiz. Councilmembers Escobedo and Cordero and Madam Mayor Patino are to make the nominations and make appointments for those committee members. Following the nominations, the city council will ratify the appointments.
So, Councilmember Cordero, do you have a nomination?
Yes, I nominate Jack Owen.
Okay. And Councilmember Escobedo, do you have a nomination?
Yes, I nominate Kathy Ortiz.
Okay. And I would like, like to nominate Trent Benedetti to the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee. So I will accept these nominations and make a motion to appoint these nominees.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
The next we have here is the Planning Commission with three vacancies. Three applications were received from the incumbents Robert Dickerson, Tom Lopez, and Tim Seifert. No other applications were received by the filing deadline. However, yesterday, staff received a late, a new application from Randy Jackson. This application will remain on file in the clerk's office for one year for future consideration in the event of a vacancy. Councilmembers Escobedo, Cordero, and Madam Mayor Patino are to make the nominations for Planning Commissioners, followed by the appointments by Madam Mayor and ratification by the city council.
So Councilmember Cordero, do you have a nomination?
Mr. Tom Lopez.
And Councilmember Escobedo, do you have a nomination?
Yes, Mr. Tim Seifer.
Okay, and then I would like to nominate Robert Dickerson to the Planning Commission. I accept these nominations, and I make a motion to appoint these three nominees to the Planning Commission.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And finally, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission with three vacancies. Two applications were received from incumbents Ann Baberson and Rebecca Carey. One new application was received from James Malina. Additionally, staff received a new application from Kenneth Dahlman after the filing deadline. This application will remain on file in the clerk's office for one year for future consideration in the event of a vacancy. Councilmember Escobedo and Councilmember Cordero, Madam Mayor Patino are making the nominations for the Recreation Parks Commissioners. Following the nominations, Madam Mayor will make the appointments and ratification by the city council.
So Councilmember Cordero, do you have a nomination?
Votter.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I nominate.
The name?
Votter. Is it Votter?
You mean it?
Batterson.
Batterson?
Batterson, yes.
Okay, oh, okay.
No, she's, she was, she was Moses, and she's not anymore.
Yeah. Please guess how to nomination.
Nope.
We've taken care of that already.
What? Okay, Carlos, Escobedo, you can go first.
Yeah, I do have, no, nominee, James Malina.
Okay. Mr. Cordero? Okay, Ann Baberson, okay. So I'd like to nominate Rebecca Carey to the Recreation and Parks Commission. I accept these nominations and make a motion to appoint these nominees to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
I didn't have Cordero on my list here, so I just have Moats and Patino.
Well, it's because that's who they're, who had appointed them initially. That's why it was, that's why it's the way it is. Yeah. Anyway, I want to thank you very much to our boards and committee, commission and commission members, and we appreciate your time and certainly your efforts. And if you were here tonight, we could stand and be, you could stand and be recognized. And eventually, you can come here and be recognized. And staff is directed to continue advertising all the remaining vacancies until filled. I wish every council member would try to find someone that wants to be on the Landmark Committee. It's really difficult. It seems difficult to fill, and you would think that it would be, it's interesting, because it's about Santa Maria.
Mr. Zemaitis does it faithfully every year, the house for the last 15 years.
Yes, Mr. Zemaitis has been great about doing that.
So, question?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, in order to appoint somebody, I thought it was just, you're the only one that can appoint somebody to that committee, or how would that work?
You can certainly find someone and bring them up with an application.
Oh.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, the city council will consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the plan development permit and adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for Centennial Gardens project to construct 160 affordable apartment units on 8.36 acre site in a PDR3, Plan Development High Density Residential zoning district.
The staff report is to be made by the Director of Community Development, Mr. Ing.
This is a presentation on the appeal of the plan development permit for Centennial Gardens Apartments located on the 800 block of West Battles Road. The applicant is Urban Planning Concepts and Southport Financial Services. The project is a 160-unit affordable apartment complex on 8.36 acres, primarily consisting of two and three-bedroom units and some four-bedroom units. This project is being reviewed under the provisions of State Density Bonus Law with a request for 26 additional units for this zoning district. The Planning Commission heard this project in September, October, and November of 2020. The appeal was filed on December 2nd, 2020 by Don Specnolo. Here's an air review of the project site outlined in yellow. This project is on the south side of Battles and west of the railroad and Depot Street. Here are some photos of the site from Battles Road looking south. It's currently vacant. Here are some photos of the site from the southern boundary looking north. In one of the pictures, you can see an existing trail that is west of the project site. This property is zone PDR3, which allows for multifamily housing. The land use designation is HDR16 or High Density Residential, 16 units per acre. Again, this is a density bonus project. The project site is 8.36 acres. Without a density bonus, this site accommodates 134 housing units. The applicant is requesting to build 160 housing units, an additional 26 units, or a 21% density bonus. Since the project is 100% affordable, the applicant is entitled up to an 80% density bonus under state law. The applicant is only asking for 21%. The resulting density is 19 units per acre from 16. Here's the latest site plan for the project. This project has been revised, but with the main entrance of the project shifted further to the west to allow for better turning movements on Battles. There's a secondary entrance from the south off of Provence and Pergola.
Do you have a, do you have a pointer so you can show us where everything's going to be?
Yeah. It points to the wall, but not to the TV screen.
Too far away.
Can you come up? I think it's going to be better if you can come up and put the cursor on that so that we can see where everything's going to be.
Okay. And here is Battles Road to the north. There was a previous version of the site plan with the entrance located right about here, but after a discussion with the Planning Commission, they shifted the entrance further to the west. This allows for better turning movements, whether it's a left turn off of Battles into the project, and also creates a, a better cue for cars going to the east for this project. There is a second, secondary access to the south of this project, and that's adjacent to Provence Avenue, which is the street that runs adjacent to the south of the project site.
Will that access be open all the time?
That ac, that is, an access that's open, yes. The 160 units are distributed throughout the nine buildings here. One community building, which is near the center of the project, serves the site. There are 330 parking spaces for this project, and that exceeds the code requirement of 320 or two per unit. There are other amenities that serve this project, including a lawn area, a barbecue area, a tot lot, and a splash pad, and you can see those amenities towards the center. This is a landscape plan for the project. There is significant landscaping adjacent to Battles. There's a larger area here. And there's also landscaping along the perimeter of the project and throughout the project site. The fencing along the western boundary, along the trail, the wrought iron fence. So again, there's, there's a trail that runs along the western boundary of the project, and there's a, there's a wrought iron fencing that's proposed adjacent to the trail. This is an image of the project that's kind of weaved or integrated into the surrounding areas. I'll just note that this is the previous site plan. You can see the, the old entrance located here, but this is, this slide is just intended to show how this blends in or, or fits into the existing homes that's surrounding this project site. Again, Battles to the north, Provence to the south, and here's Pergola adjacent to this southern entrance, and the trail that runs adjacent to the west. The next couple of slides show the architecture. Its mission style is three stories. The building at its peak is 37 feet, and that exceeds the, the standard by two feet. The, the height limit for this area is 35 feet, but this exceeds it by 30, by two feet at 37 feet. More pictures of the elevation. So we received a letter from the appellant, and I want to highlight some of the issues. The appellant states that the building height is out of scale with the surrounding homes. The appellant states that the open metal perimeter fence will create unobstructed views of parked cars along the west side of the development. The appellant states that the project would introduce more cars on residential, residential streets, both in terms of parked cars and vehicular traffic. The staff's response, and this is consistent with the Planning Commission's approval, is that the two additional feet beyond the 35-foot has a minimal impact, given the location of the buildings away from the single-family homes and the landscape buffers.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I've got a report that says it's 35, 35. I've got a report that says it's 38 feet. Is it 37? Is it 37 or 38?
Our plans show 37 feet, but I think the applicant is also on the line and can provide confirmation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
In regards to the fencing, staff feels that the open fencing would provide more eyes on the trail and contribute to safety. In regards to the additional vehicles, the project does meet the parking requirements, two per apartment plus 10, so 330 for the project, 10 more than the 320 required. And there was a traffic study that was prepared for this project. The traffic study indicated that the project would not have significant negative impacts to adjacent residential streets, and the traffic study also looked at a build-out scenario of the Acquistapatchi property to the north. And even with the Acquistapatchi property being built, it is still within acceptable levels of service for the surrounding streets. Staff's recommendation is that the City Council deny the appeal and affirm the decision made by the Planning Commission to approve a plan development permit, PD 2020-006, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the Centennial Gardens project. Staff is available for any further questions. We also have staff from Public Works, and I believe the applicant and appellant are both online. And I'm going to return to the podium to provide Councilman Waterfield.
Before you return to the podium, can you go back and show me where the entrance will be off of Battles, again? So, is that right next to the path, then?
Yes, it is. There's a trail that also is adjacent to the western boundary.
Yeah, and then that'll be a fencing there?
Yes.
Okay. Wow. Thank you. Okay, questions of Mr. Ng?
Yes. I'll wait till he gets to the podium. In the walking path, and where Nartatis and Menusa's court is, the homes are right there. Is that a block wall behind their homes, or is that wrought iron?
Mayor and Councilwoman Waterfield, on the, so there's a trail, and the wall, there is a wall on the west side of the trail, yes.
Okay, there is. Okay. Is it a block wall?
It's a block wall.
Okay, fantastic. That's what I need to know. Okay, and then I got two drawings of this, and I think they're backwards, because I showed the updated with the entrance in the middle, but that was the old one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the original, so then I'm just going to throw that one away, because I got confused there for a second. And I'm glad to see that there is another exit out on Provence Avenue, because you're going to be having a lot of, you're going to have a lot of cars there, a lot of cars there. So, but I was just concerned about the wall for the other neighbors that already have their homes established right there. And I'll just wait until I hear from the applicant to make other comments.
Any other questions of Mr. Ng?
I do have, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, in regards to the entrance on Provence Avenue, is that an exit, entrance and exit, or just exit?
Councilman Escobedo, it is a full access. You can come in and out of that access point.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Ng?
I have one more.
Yes.
In restructuring this, did you make, did you have to make the exit off of Battles smaller than the original one? Did that get reduced?
Councilwoman Waterfield, it looks like, it look, well, I can't tell whether it's more narrow than the previous driveway. That could be a question that the applicant can provide. I can't quite tell on the plans, because the dimensions aren't shown here.
Yeah, only because with the two different drawings I received, it looked like the middle one had a bigger exit and entrance on that, so I'll wait for the...
Mr. Ng, is there going to be a turning lane off of Battles?
Mayor, there is a, there is a left turn pocket into the apartment complex. So if you're going, if you're traveling west on Battles, there is a pocket that you can turn into, that will lead you into the project.
If you're going west?
If you're going west.
On Battles, okay.
Yes.
Because people really fly down Battles. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Is the appellant available to make any comments?
Brian, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us a moment? We want to speak with the appellate first. We'll queue you in. No, that's okay. We'll queue you in in just a moment. Mr. Spagnolo? Are you there? Can you hear us? I think you need to unmute yourself. Mr. Spagnolo, can you hear? There you go. I think, there you go. You're unmuted now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. I'm Don Spagnolo, the resident of Pacific Crest State. And I'm here today, tonight, to, just to speak to you on behalf of some of the residents that are concerned, are afraid, and concerned about this project. 15 years ago, when these folks bought their homes, there was an indication that there will be multifamily homes on this site. However, over time, the requirements have changed, codes have changed, and now we're looking at higher building heights and perimeter fencing changes and additional density in more parts. And I put this all in an email to you, so I'm not going to go and recite what was in the email, but I just want to impress upon you the concerns of the neighborhood regarding the driveway outlet to Provence and Pergola. If there is a way to prevent cars from going down Provence, that would be preferable. The screening wall that was proposed in previous developments is now gone because of some planning, new planning standards and whatever. So, there are many changes that have occurred over time. The residents are very concerned that those changes are going to impact them more than the original design that was proposed. So, with increasing of the density from 133 to 160, the additional cars, the parking is an issue too. The staff report clearly states that there are two cars per unit. However, that's probably appropriate for the two-bedroom units. The three-bedroom and four-bedroom units, there's probably going to be more vehicle. And we've seen this in total time here with the changes that were made to St. Clair, from being condominium complex to a apartment complex. And the thing that concerns people the most is there's no enforcement of these things. There's no way to, you know, go to someone to, you know, report these kinds of things, these increases in traffic and traffic all over the place. There's just no enforcement of that, and that's a big concern. Because if and when these things happen, and I know there was a traffic study that was conducted, and, you know, they decide how many trips go here and there, and they decided that almost 200 trips are going to go up and down Provence. That's a big change. That's a residential street. Driveways face it, families and kids and things that go on in a residential area. Increasing the traffic is something they're very concerned about, and they'd like to see that traffic forced down Pergola to Sonya. And that's the, but that's the streets that have no access on driveways, so that makes it safe. So they're concerned about the wall, the screening wall, the traffic, the increase in density, and so they've asked me to come and talk to you this evening and present that to you in hopes that the council will consider making some modifications to alleviate their fears and concerns. So those are my comments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Spagno, what were you meaning in terms of modification regarding the parking?
I think the one thing that we mentioned early on at the November meeting was, the Planning Commission was, there's a way to construct a small island that takes a driveway to the south and Provence, that will force cars coming from this development down Pergola to Sonya, which would make total sense. There's no driveways there. There's no impact any residents, and that's a very small thing that they can do, is very easy.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Spagnolo?
Ms. Waterfield, you need to turn on your mic. Well, Ms. Waterfield is going to ask a question.
Mr. Spagnolo, are there a lot of parked cars now on Provence Avenue?
Yes, there are. This development that was approved by the council back in '05, Pacific Crest, had one parking space in front of each house for guests, guest parking. So those spaces are pretty full right now, and so there's hardly any room for any other cars to park.
What about Pergola?
Pergola, there are some cars that park on either side of the street. It's not completely full, so there is probably some room to park cars there. And suggesting that this driveway vehicles coming from this site directed down Pergola to Sonya makes perfect sense, because that's where folks from this development will ultimately park. There is going to be some concern with people parking at the end of Menusa and Nartatis, because those are close, and open spaces, so that's a concern. But if we could address the most of the concern and have people, you know, some parking on Pergola, and that would be appropriate. That would be fantastic.
And what is the height issue that you're concerned with?
Well, the height issue is related to the proposed height of buildings. You know, they have a requirement standard of 35 feet. These are going to be 37, 38 feet. That's almost, it's all as a cell phone tower. So those are fairly tall buildings next to the existing homes. Originally, when back 18 years, it was talked about putting high-density buildings in there, that were two-story, which would be more appropriate. And we had suggested at the Planning Commission on the 18th, November 18th, that the buildings adjacent to Provence be two-story instead of three-story, so that make that transition from the existing homes to the new.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I just want to refer back to some of the questions that Councilwoman Waterfield asked around Provence Avenue, and asking about the traffic being diverted towards Pergola. Was that addressed at all during the traffic study or during the Planning Commission's conversation?
Councilman Soto, yes, that topic was discussed in the traffic study. The traffic study shows an overall trip generation of a little bit over 1,100, and estimated that about 83% would go into Battles, and about 17% would come off into the residential streets. So there was a mention of about 200 trips coming off of the residential streets, and about 800 or 900 going north. And there was a recommendation in the traffic study that there would be an opening to the south to alleviate some pressure off of the Battles entrance.
Any other questions?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, question, what kind of apartments are we talking about? A one, two, three, how many apartments are going to be offered?
Councilman Escobedo, there are 160 apartment units, so the breakdown is 72-bedroom, 73-bedroom, and 24-bedroom.
Thank you.
You said 24-bedroom?
24-bedroom units.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, are we ready for...
Okay, Brian, I think we might be ready for you. Are you available?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Give me a second. Am I going to be sharing my screen?
You know what, I'll go ahead and pull it up.
We do have a couple of free slides.
Can you see it? All right, can you see the slides now?
Yeah, I can see that. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Ng did a very nice job overall with the presentation and the background. Again, we do have a few slides to present, mostly from an operational perspective, about the management, the applicant, and then I can answer some of the questions and concern that you're sharing about.
I believe you have control of the screen. I think you just have to accept.
Great, thank you. I do also want to introduce the applicant, Jennifer Rice, from Southport Financial. Could you answer any questions that I may not be able to with regards to the operations and her experience in management of these projects? They do specialize in multifamily housing and affordable housing. Southport Financial has over 120 important projects in various locations.
Did you access control, or should I go ahead and transition the screen forward?
Oh, excuse me. So, in our last year, we did reach out to the neighborhood at Verlis Day, and how did the neighborhood need 300 people? We proposed plans to them, and had a dialogue about the upcoming project. There was, there's been several project modifications made as a result of their concerns thus far and the Planning Commission, which Mr. Ng discussed with regards to the realignment of the access off of Battles. We have realigned the exit over from the west side to the east side to prevent bikes from car shining into existing houses. shining into existing homes and some conflicts with the multipurpose trail there. Um, the, the off-site parking still seems to be a, a, a concern with the residents. Um, we'll talk about the, the parking a little bit more, but in general, they do have a lease, uh, within the lease that a maximum of two cars are allowed per unit. We communicated that there will be an onsite manager to discourage off-site parking in their portions of the neighborhood and that that manager will be in contact and will be a zone with the different residents. We did give a full presentation at the study session. We also gave a full presentation at the, the October 24th planning commission hearing. We, there were several comments at that planning commission hearing. So, um, anyways, we have tried to keep our, our activity, we've done some things early and, you know, maintenance and project adjustments of, on. With Canids Management Incorporated, we'll be a management company. They have over 33 years' experience in working in affordable housing. They manage over 17,000 units that are on percent of income. So they have significant experience, um, with these projects and the management. There will be, um, with regards to the number of occupants, a maximum of two persons per bedroom plus one in the, in the unit will be allowed. Um, new tenants must be screened prior to occupancy. They also do annual screening. And Mr. Spagnella has expressed concerns about this project, um, in relationship to the St. Clair apartment project. And this project's a little bit different. It is, um, it's a family project. Persons must be related to each other in, um, to be in the unit. And they are, they are income-qualified. So it's very important for, um, they, they screen people regularly, especially through the number of people and as well as their incomes. Because if they can't pull, uh, below a certain level and be above a certain level, or else their tax credits could be in jeopardy. And so they, they have very tight controls on their, on their side with regards to the number of people. Also with parking in it, you know, like I mentioned, the two cars, a lot of per unit lease. Um, and then with regards to the parking according to the applicant, they, the residents really do heavily rely on public transportation. There is a bus stop within a four-mile and another within about a half-mile, run every half an hour there. With a lease agreement, they, that generally covers a, you know, rules and regulations, protection barriers, upkeep, um, the number of guests, general conduct, et cetera. Um, and it's important to note that the residents that we're looking here, they are working class people from a community that may not make a job. There's income qualifications, as I mentioned. And these are, these are worse. These are people in work farms, their teachers, their fresh market, their employees at the grocery store. So they, they are working class people up here, um, that'll be living here in their part of the community. You know, but I was doing some notes, uh, about the density bonus. South Florida doesn't provide for a ton of percent density bonus, even though they're allowed 80%. So right now, the number of units that runs 50, they kind of up to, almost up to 240, but they didn't do that because they wanted to make this a very nice project, a very livable project, a very sufficient, uh, nice life. I'll see. This is not a, a highly dense, like, it's super compact. In fact, the density is below the maximum allowed in the occupancy zone. It's about 18 and a half, 19 minutes per acre. The two-point increase on the height, uh, of some of the buildings, you know, the setbacks from the adjacent residences to the, to the east is, excuse me, the west is over 100 feet. And to the south as well, it's about 100 feet. The 2 feet is not going to be noticeable. Um, this project, First State density, I'm sorry, they, they qualify for reconcessions against development standards where they could, how to relax development standards to First State law. They're not pretty much in one concession. It meets or exceeds all the development standards under the nine. The environmental document contains mostly standard mitigation measures, which then they concern just to get the comments from the city, uh, departments or regional state agencies. In general, this is just a really well-designed, uh, project, lots of amenities. It's extremely nice. Um, yeah, I think it will compare to most other apartment projects at market rate. It's gonna be affordable for a class of, 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 staff has been very supportive of this project. The planning commission and the, the, were very complimentary of it. Um, we have made some modifications, as I mentioned, to, um, heat trucks and landscape heating, within the, uh, new sheds of the cul-de-sacs, made the entrances onto the, um, uh, the, the access onto the multipurpose trail, uh, exit only. So it will be discouraged parking in the, in the cul-de-sac areas. I did want to clarify one thing though, and that is the asset layout onto Provence. 167 trips is what the traffic study really states. And if you think about that within a 12-hour period, how about, uh, part color drips and part, uh, additional? I'm not sure if that's, you know, we would really notice that you were being here on a regular residential street. Anyways, we, we read the staff report, the commission approval, we agree with them. Let's see. They do also want to point out one last thing with regards to the parking. There is an opportunity for about 25 parking spaces just in front of the project along the front edge, on the cross. So now, is the project see the, the parking area? There would be off-site parking directly in front of the project along the lawn. And this parking 25, that's not through Pergola, that's probably through the Napple or in front of one of the, um, the fire. We, we believe that, you know, if you can all measures are in place, there is not getting parking in that neighborhood. Um, I, we also yield good this project tonight. We think it's a great project. And, um, we're available for any questions. I would like to say some final comments.
Any questions of Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so, uh, I was there today, and it was the middle of the day. It was, uh, like 2 o'clock. And you're right, there's about 25 parking places on Provence. And I would say that 80 to 85% of those parking places were already taken today. So I don't know how many of those are going to be available to tenants. So, uh, you're correct that they were there, but they're, they're being taken at this, at this part of time if by the current residents that are there. So I, I, I wouldn't count on that as part of your count. Uh, the other thing, when you said that you're gonna have a 20, a 24-hour day, seven days a week, uh, manager onsite, is that correct?
Yes.
And that person will be accessible 24 hours a day? Or persons?
Yes, they will. Yes, they will. And, and Mrs. Rice is on the line as well. She can weigh in. But yes, it's 24 hours and they would be accessible 24-hour to the tenants and/or I assume, and, you know, if there was a complaint by the residents, that they would be available for that as well. Or the off-site residents.
Okay, you have, you have listed here 160 units. Uh, how many people do you think that's going to, um, accommodate when you have, uh, so many 3-bedrooms and so many 4-bedrooms and of course 2-bedrooms? About. I realize you can't, you know, that number is a moving target. It could change daily. But I'm thinking it's over 600, 700 people. Is that right?
Brian, can you hear Councilmember Cordero's question?
If you give me a minute, I'm trying to think what it's, what, let's see, um, numbers for--
Brian, can I get you to actually speak into your microphone? You're really cracking up or really kind of gone out.
All right, can you hear me now?
Perfect, thank you.
I, I was just trying to do a quick calculation on between the different 2, 3, and 4 bedrooms and a potential number of occupants per unit. Um, yeah, I, I think, you know, you're, the number that you, you've come up with is probably accurate. It's hard, it's hard to say and it'd be ever-changing.
So we're talking about moving somewhere between 600 and 1,000 people into that relatively small space, uh, when you talk about that many folks. Is that right?
Yeah, I think 1,000 people might be a, a bit, um, on the high side. There would certainly be, um, I would predict, uh, 3, approximately 3 or 4 2-bedroom and maybe 4 people, 5 people, um, in a 3-bedroom. Maybe even up to, I mean, the occupancy limit, it's not, I don't think every single unit goes to an occupancy limit for, for every unit. Theoretically, I guess they can by, by laws surrounding that. But to, to assume that there would be a maximum number of people living there, I, I'm not, that would be the case, um, or that could be allowed per occupancy laws.
Okay, let me ask you this, sir. Uh, how are you planning on enforcing or administering this relationship requirement? Um, how, how is that going to work for, for you, uh, to, to make sure that people are related? Maybe that question goes to the person who's gonna be administering the program that's online.
I, you know, I, I know that, um, and it's not a condition of approval already. It can be a, made a condition of approval that the onsite managers' contact information is made available to, you know, residents within 300 feet of the property. If that's, if that would be something that the council would feel more comfortable with, if it's not already a condition.
Well, I just find that it would be somewhat cumbersome and difficult to make sure that everyone is related into any specific residence. How are you gonna know that, that it's not a sublet kind of, of a situation? Um, and I, and I think that the fear probably in some people's minds is that we're gonna end up with, uh, 7 or 8 or 9 or 10 people in a 4-bedroom. Uh, and, and that, that would quickly, uh, develop into, uh, an unacceptable problem.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your, your question. Um, I know they, they have a very rigorous screening, um, requirements for every, um, for every family, for every, for every person that, that occupies a unit. And I think I, I should turn it over to Ms. Rice because she would be the best one to, to answer that question about the screening process.
Right. Um, yeah, we have, this is long-term, we are not, they are not allowed, uh, previous studies being on, recent studies of moving for education. Um, and we do, um, in some , uh, all of them. Uh, in order to be compliant with the law, and we have these, these are kind of files, uh, in order to verify compliance with the regulations. So it's something that is being, you're, 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 and it's not something that we have at all. It, it, yeah, it has a significant financial conference structure. You do not provide a file to house your unit.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions here? Uh, Ms. Waterfield?
Hi, Brian, this is Etta. Um, I, I wanna play off of Councilmember Cordero's, uh, amount of people that are gonna be living there because I looked at your lease and per bedroom, per bedroom is 2 persons plus 1. Is that correct?
My understanding is 2 persons plus--
So why does that just 3?
For one extra per, in the, in the entire unit.
Oh, in the entire unit. Okay. So if we--
That's a maximum allowed for 2 4-bedrooms and per, and in 1 unit, 1 person. And not the maximum ever allowed.
Okay. Um, well, doing my math, and I, I did with 3 people per bedroom, per your units that you have indicated, and there were, uh, quite a few people, around 1,000 people living in that area. My concern is the parking. And when you look at 300, you look at 160 units times 2 is 320. But in reality, you're gonna add at least another car or 2 per unit in that neighborhood. You're looking at 480 cars there. And, and my calculation was 320 plus 160, which is the 480. You're really putting a lot of cars on the streets at Provence and, uh, Pergola. And I just don't think that is doable. Uh, I--
Well, I think one, one thing that I'm missing is that this is family housing. So in those bedrooms, there's gonna be multiple children as well. This is long-term housing as well. We can't afford, and then the houses, as we clear down the street, there, we are a lot different, a lot of people in the law, unless we can afford them to be. We just don't, we are not able to afford anything that we, that we are worrying about. And there are also the, how could they be children? We are large, uh, family housing. So that's what our, that's our idea is to walk the home.
And I realize that, I realize, um, what you're saying, but this is also Santa Maria and there are a lot of cars per unit, more than 2. And so we've looked at, um, affordable apartments and one point was Arbor Ridge, over there on corner of Miller and Enos. And Brian, I know you know where this is. And they had a lot of parking spaces there, but those residents were parking in the neighborhood across east of Miller. And we got a lot of complaints in regards to the apartment parking on their streets. And, uh, one of the biggest complaints was, um, people leaving trash and just leaving their car there and never ever moving it. So we're talking about a lot of cars in a small area that's already filled with, um, residents' cars as well. So, um, those are my concerns there. And I don't know how you would address that because, um, I know, Ms. Rice, I, Santa Maria is a, is a community with a lot of cars. No matter how we try to, uh, structure, uh, the ordinances in regards to a project, it's, uh, we only come to find out that it creates a bigger problem. That's my comments.
Did you have any comments, Mr. Escobedo?
Okay. You know, I, I drove by there, drove by there and parked for a while today to look at this. And I noticed that on Provence, there were probably 3 spaces left that someone could park because there's 2 fire hydrants there. And part of this is, and, and Mr. Ing, I think it's probably maybe something we need to look at, at, at our codes. But those, the driveways on, um, the, the housing development there are pretty narrow. And my sister was down here a couple of months ago and she remarked to me, she says, "Everyone around here drive a truck." Because we have a lot of trucks in our community. And, um, and those driveways seem very, very, very narrow, which means that people from that house are parking down the street. So I was recalling when, say, my kids were in high school and they each had a vehicle and they each had a truck. And so they had to park out on the streets. Um, and, and so on Provence, there's, there's parking-- And so on Provence, there's, there's parking, the very few spaces that were left, and go on Pergola, and there's parking there. And this was in the middle of the day, but then I drove over there. So I think that we get a lot, that's one thing, we get a lot of complaints, probably all of us do, is the parking and the lack of parking here in Santa Maria. Secondly, I don't know who answers this question, but what about the schools? How many kids do we expect out of this development?
Anyone can answer that?
56.
Brian, are you still there?
You can round it off to 55, yeah. I'm sure you've spoken to Mr. Grogan about this?
Interestingly enough, Mr. Grogan has not contacted us. Jennifer, do you have any numbers about the general number of students per household that might be generated?
We don't know until people start applying, so we just don't have an answer for that.
We have a lot of kids in our community. We have a very youthful community, so I would expect there's a lot. And I don't know that if, if Mr. Grogan hasn't contacted you, and I don't know if he's contacted us, has he contacted us? Because the schools are going to want to know.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Grogan and I, we speak on a regular basis. What I don't, I don't have a specific number of students for this particular project, but he has been looking at this area for a long time, certainly with the Acuist Apache property. He is certainly concerned about school enrollment and is concerned about making sure that there are adequate facilities to accommodate future population into the future.
Yeah, because I see a lot of kids coming out of this and across the street, yes. We don't have a lot of people here that you really, our public transit, our buses aren't always full. And high school kids used to use the lot, I would see it when they were going to school and then coming home, but I don't see our, our buses that are that full. And that's even prior to the, prior to COVID. So those are my only comments, but I, I really am concerned about the parking.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Escobado?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's, from listening, from all the parts, I think that I share that concern in regards to the parking. It's all over the city. I mean, every single place, you get somebody parking in, on your driveway, or people even blocking, putting some stuff on there, so people don't, don't park in front of their houses, and there's a lot of conflict. So I do share that concern, and, you know, my first car was a $900 car, and, you know, it was, everybody can get a car nowadays. So I think that's, everybody has their own job, they have, go to work, go to school, so we're expecting more than 2 cars per apartment, definitely.
Soto, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to first start by asking, what's a splash pad?
A splash, I can answer that question. A splash pad is an area for the children that, it's a non-slip surface where water shoots out of the ground, so that it's a, it's a water play area.
Like at Disneyland.
Yeah, that's, that's very innovative. And, I mean, just as I'm, as I'm looking at the design of this development, I mean, it looks very family-focused, right? Like, I'm imagining a family with small children living here, and the fact that this is a, you know, market rate, you know, housing, you know, affordable housing here in the city of Santa Maria, I think it's definitely needed. I mean, when we're looking at the majority of the units being less than 3 bedrooms, 3 to, 3 and less, up to 3-bedroom apartments or units, I mean, that, that speaks volumes. I mean, I actually live in this neighborhood, so I drive by here every day, and I actually walk through this, this lot to go get coffee in the mornings every once in a while. And so the amount of trash and pileup that is here is immense. And so the opportunity to be able to do something with this space is very appealing. As we know, right, our city, we are growing, and there's no stopping us from growing at this point. And until we complete the general plan update, our, one of our solutions, right, to growth is infill. And this is a great opportunity for us, for us to do that. This is a great piece of land that hasn't been utilized, that is, you know, part of the current general plan, and it's been zoned for this particular purpose. The reason why we see multiple families living in a, in a, in a, in a single household, and I've shared this with Mr. Still numerous times, because again, this is my neighborhood, is because of how big these homes are. These are 6-bedroom homes. And so the mortgage payment for these homes are $25 to $3,500 of a month, if not more. And so a lot of our working-class families, in order to either, you know, be a renter in this neighborhood, or to be a homeowner, you know, they often resort to, to needing to, to get additional tenants to live there. And in my, in, a couple of years back, I used to live at an HOA, and in the HOA regulations, they specifically said that you can have anybody other than family living in your home, living in your unit. And so if an HOA can regulate that to a homeowner, I don't see why a landlord such as, you know, whoever is going to be managing this property, or the landlord of this property, wouldn't be able to impose certain regulations within their lease. I mean, here in the city, again, our city is in need of smaller unit housing, or smaller bedroom units in the city of Santa Maria, so that people can afford to live there, and again, avoid the overcrowding that we've been seeing for so long and that we continue to perpetuate by not developing smaller units such as these. Again, I'm seeing, I mean, I think the concern around parking is, is also a concern of mine, but I think it's also time that we start shifting that mentality, especially given that our next item is a Santa Maria Active Transportation Plan, and its whole focus is to essentially make Santa Maria more walkable, bikeable, and ensure that people use our public transportation. And unless we get out of this mindset of we need to build our city around cars rather than people, we're going to continue to have this problem and continue to build parking lots rather than residential units. And so, again, I live a couple of blocks from here, and I am actually quite thrilled about this project. I think it will be a great addition to, to the neighborhood. I mean, that, that lot, like I said, is built up with trash, the railroad, you know, you know, sometimes we have people who are houseless living there. And so I think that this is a great opportunity, not only to bring the much-needed affordable housing to the city, but also ensure that we're doing something useful and purposeful with this land. And again, getting out of the mindset of building around cars rather than families and people.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield?
Brian, what is the actual height of the buildings? How did we, how many, how many feet did we go up? 2 or 3?
Brian, would you mind speaking into the microphone? We can't hear you.
I was looking for the page number, but I'm showing, I see 37 feet maximum on the height.
Okay. And what is that extra 2 feet needed for?
It really just makes the unit a little bit more livable. It provides a little type, a little bit more of a higher ceiling, it makes it just a little more comfortable in the unit.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last. Yeah, I don't know, you're turning your head when you're talking, or?
Yeah, you're kind of cutting out, Brian. Is there any way that you can direct your comments to the microphone specifically? No, can't hear you now.
I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble.
We kind of hear you go in and out.
So the, the depth makes the unit just a little bit more livable in the sense that the, the ceiling heights get increased a little bit more. So they would go from 8-foot ceilings to 9-foot ceilings.
Okay. My, my second question is, in your entrance off of Battles, your entrance and exit off of Battles, when that was moved from the middle to the, the walking site, did that shrink?
You know, I, I'd need to look at the other, I would need to look at both the plans. It does look a little bit more narrow.
It does. It, it, there's a significant difference.
However, the Public Works Department did look at these plans, and certainly they would meet all of the city's standards for width and for safety and turning radiuses that are, that are not only required, but, you know, to get all emergency services in and out, more than adequate.
Okay, another concern in regards to that, if it's narrowed, I'm really concerned because how long is the left turn lane going into this project? Because it doesn't look like there's a lot of room until you back up to the railroad tracks. And then there's, there's quite a bit of difference that the railroad tracks want you to stay away from as far as a train coming through, which I'm thinking would back up traffic on Battles on the other side, on the east side of Depot Street, because those lanes get more narrow. Going west, yeah. If you look, if you look at your project site on your computer, and look at the diagram.
Jennifer, ask them real quick, if you look at, and I don't know if you guys have the old documents, but there was a divider in the middle of the left and right turn lane, in and out of the project, when it was in the center, that divider was removed, which did narrow a little bit, just to compensate for that divider no longer being there, which was something that I believe the students reflected of us, to take that divider out.
I don't know if Mr. Coons has any information in regards to the length of the left turn lane, or the width of the entrance and exit of this project.
Good evening, Council. So I'm Kevin McKeon, Public Works Director. As the applicant has said, the entrance to the project used to have a median down the middle that was removed when the Planning Commission actually asked for that driveway to be moved to the west. And one of the reasons it was moved was exactly what you're talking about, is to add more storage to that left-hand turn lane so that it wouldn't interfere with the adjacent intersection. I don't have the length in front of me right now, but that was specifically a request of the Planning Commission, and this met the, the concern that was brought up.
Well, then, if you make that more narrow, and then you've got a walking and bicycle lane that is right there next to it, that concerns me quite a bit, only because you're going to have a lot of people wanting to make sure that they can get in there quick enough before that light changes on Blosser. So I, I just, I don't feel comfortable without the actual numbers and widths and lengths in regards to this project, because we are adding, we are adding about 1,087 people to this project, and we're looking at at least 480 vehicles going in and out with only 2 entrance and exits. So I, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable about this project right now.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Does the appellant have any follow-up based on the applicant's comments?
Council members, I don't, comments?
I think, Brian, we're, we're losing you.
No, I want Spagnola.
No, yeah. Brian, I think we want to speak to the appellant. Is Mr. Spagnoli available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, perfect.
And you, the council brings up some good questions, and some of them just aren't, you can't answer, you know, how many people are going to go out this driveway, or how many people go on Battles, it's a guess, and you really won't know. And one of the council people said that those spaces are already taken on Provence and Pergola. So yes, those are, that's the reality, and you're totally correct.
Okay. Does anyone have questions of the applicant or the appellant? Okay, I'd like to open the hearing, like to open it to the public. Any other questions from the council? Any public to speak?
Madam Mayor, first I'll ask if there are any interested individuals who wish to speak on this item, please be prepared to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting or press *9 by phone to be called on in order to, in the order received. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we received written communications from the appellant on behalf of residents of Pacific Crest Estates reiterating his objections to the project based on building height, perimeter fencing, project density, and vehicle access parking. Joel Paz, Brandon Jimenez, Erica Martinez, Jorge Martinez also wrote in opposition to the Centennial Gardens project, expressing, let's, all, those individuals also wrote in opposition of the project. And then in support of the project was Espy Can, requesting that the project be approved and deny the appeal. It looks like there are, right now, 6 speakers with their hands up. I will start with Shannon Dickerson, followed by Joe Soto. Shannon?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so, hello, Ms. Patino, Mayor Patino, and council members. My name is Shannon Dickerson, and I am a resident of Pacific Crest. My husband and I purchased our home now 4 years ago. And, and looking at the neighborhood then, you know, we didn't envision apartments there, and I'm sure a lot of other residents would say the same. Both my husband and I started off, I would say, very poor in life. So I am not trying to dismiss those that are looking, you know, to live in, in a decent home or neighborhood. But I also want to point out the fact that my parents went through something kind of similar, where they had purchased a home, there was an empty lot, low-income housing had been built, and their housing prices suffered. And the reality is for a lot of us that are middle class, working middle class, that is the only financial security and way to accumulate wealth we have is real estate. And I feel like that would really have a negative impact on the people that have been living here and putting money into this community and area. You know, most of us did not buy here in order to live next to, I'm going to be honest, low-income housing apartments. I know I didn't. I'm already concerned with the parking issues that everyone else has brought up. We can look to St. Clair as a really good example as to why we don't need high-density apartments in this area. I don't know if many of you have taken walks down Biscayne Avenue, but that is basically the street that divides St. Clair and Pacific Crest. I often walk my dogs on this, this area. And not only is there broken glass at least once a week, and it's beer bottles, there's drug paraphernalia, we have actually seen crack pipes, needles, and there's just an array of different types of trash. That street is constantly packed full of cars. I don't think I've ever seen a time, except for when they were doing roadwork, that- I don't think I've ever seen a time, except for when they were doing roadwork, that the street wasn't packed itself. Not only the issues with trash and parking, but it also poses a danger for the families that already live here. I don't know if you guys drive down that street a lot, but there have been many times where I've almost gotten hit in my car, I've almost gotten hit on my bike. And for the children that play outside on these streets, adding more high-density, you know, housing and parking is not going to help the issue. We see a lot of speeding, we, you know, people are rushing to get places, there are collisions. There's just basically an overall lack of safety for the current residents and their families. A lot of congestion.
Ms. Dickerson, your three minutes are up. We're going to go to the-
Oh, no, I had three, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I'm sorry, I should have announced that.
Can I just say one more thing? There's going to be a lot of unsupervised teenagers, and we already have tons of graffiti, so it's just not something I want to see happen.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Soto, followed by Bernardo Rodriguez. Mr. Soto?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm sorry. My concerns were already mentioned by the lady ahead of me. Another question I would have also was about the students, but Mrs. Butterfield brought that up. My other thing is, who did the survey of the vehicles going up and down the street? Because I'm home every day, and I see vehicles speeding all the time down Provence. And also, my wife and I's concern is the noise at night, the lighting, nobody's mentioned anything about the lighting that's going to be in the parking lot. Now, we live right, we're going to be right next door to that complex, so we're going to be able to see the vehicles, hear the vehicles, and so forth. Yes, we had this conversation with the developer about they're going to have 24/7 coverage, but really, everybody knows that offices close at a certain time. So if they're going to be open 24/7, and I hope they are, because I'm going to be the one that's going to be the first one complaining about anything that's coming out of that complex, because I'm going to be right next door. I'm being honest, I'm right next door, and that's my concern. Yes, I do walk around the neighborhood, I see all the stuff on the ground, and I'm very sorry that, you know, people are this way, but that's just in general. My other question is, that oil pipeline over there, and nobody ever mentioned anything about that? I don't know if that has been brought up, because every once in a while we see the rigs over there drilling and making some type of noise, that obviously something's going on, but we don't, we don't question it, we still, they work there a lot. So basically, all the complaints that have been brought up that I have, you guys already heard them, so I'm not going to repeat them. So thank you, thank you for your time, and hope you guys do the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Our next speaker is Bernardo Rodriguez, followed by Blanca Garcia.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, yes, we can.
Cool. So I totally agree with Shannon Dickerson, so I'm not going to repeat what she said, because I agree that 100%. I'm a resident here since 2009, I also moved in here thinking there weren't going to be no apartments. The apartments that they created in Vicania, Vicay Street, they made those apartments sound like really great too, it was going to be great, it was going to be good families, but ended up turning the opposite, way more people, way more cars. You got to, specifically the extra people that are moving in that are not being documented or recorded by the apartment complex, are the immigrant workers, the seasonal workers, and they're bringing in tons of cars that have tons of dirt. And my, and just to wrap that section up real quick, my daughters are even not afraid to go through the AMPM store in the corner, because they see a lot of keeping in, hanging out in the cars and groups, fixing the cars on the side, and they just don't feel comfortable anymore. That's a horrible thing, and now to be sandwiched between two apartments that are going to have the same issues, it's going to be a horrible thing. These low-income kids, trust me, I'm Mexican, I was, my parents were born in Mexico, and they both were field workers, and I worked very hard to live in this residence as a middle class, and just to see it go all the way, because immigrants and low-income people, you know, fortunately, it's sad to, you know, be low-income, but they're going to bring in kids, they're going to have, they'll all have two, three kids, you know, they're all going to be born, they're all going to be starting stealing from our neighborhood, or creating graffiti, which was an issue that had been rising for a little while. You know, and then you see how these cars are going to turn left on Battles, go west, that's going to be a huge traffic problem right there, especially around 4, 5 o'clock when all the field workers come home, because that's where it's going to be, it's going to be one of those apartments where it's going to have field workers. And this is, and then plus a wall between the apartments, houses, Pacific Crest and apartments, that wall right there, that alleyway, I promise you, it's going to be a drug walkway, because it's going to be dark, it's going to be hard to see, and people are just going to take advantage of it in the best way. And this, I just see, and I've been taking my bikes, I've been studying, I've been trying to make my neighborhood good, I've been communicating with my neighborhoods, I've been joining the apps, I've been trying to raise awareness, because I'm not sure what Brian said, he meant he kind of made an attempt to talk to all of us, I never received anything. I talked to other people, they never received anything. So either he sent a little postcard, or I don't know how he did it, but it didn't get through very well. So I'm not sure what he's talking about there. The pictures they're showing, they're showing you nice fancy cars, people that live there, you know, Caucasian people, unfortunately, those pictures, it's not going to look like that. I promise you that, I'll take pictures now, and I'll take pictures later, I can prove it to you, it's not going to look like that. I do want, you know, I mean, I hate to say, but it's going to be a bad thing, so I, it's just, you know, I want to repeat myself with what we already said, and what's going to be saying, but it's a horrible idea, and unfortunately, I see it. I live here, I smell it, I sense it. It affects me, because I live in this neighborhood, not the ones that don't.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for your comments. We'll move on to our next speaker, which is Blanca Garcia, followed by Lulu Luna. You need to unmute? Are you there? Ms. Garcia? I can't hear you. You appear to be unmuted on our side. We'll come back to you, Ms. Garcia. Ms. Lulu Luna?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. You have three minutes?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Patino and city council members. I first want to say thank you so much to Etta Waterfield for bringing up most of the concerns of the citizens of Pacific Crest. I would also like to add, and I'm not just going to speak on traffic issues of the residents, but as a mother of young children, bringing up the safety of traffic that's going to affect the neighboring Jimenez School, if you drive by there right now, school's not in session, the parking from St. Clair Apartments has gone all the way to the school, and again, school's not in session right now. So when school goes back, I mean, the traffic in the morning and after school is insane, and adding 1,000 more residents with children, I mean, it's just going to be crazy. Like, I mean, the people that are proposing this project, they obviously don't live in this town, they aren't from here, so they aren't painting a very pretty picture. But it's going to affect multiple families who already are established here, paying property taxes, who are trying to raise their families in this nice neighborhood, and, I mean, it has gone down the drain because of St. Clair. I mean, we're not trying to always compare, but it is a huge issue. And, you know, the, the, oh, sorry, the resolutions they have given us with St. Clair is call the police, how many times do we have to call the police? Like, why do we even have to get there in the first place? I just feel like, you know, this is obviously a huge concern if this many residents are against this project. I mean, it's a beautiful project, and, you know, as a real estate agent, I do know we need housing in the area, we definitely need SFR, like single-family residences. I mean, we do have a ton of apartments around the area, and yes, we do need more housing, but maybe more single families for, you know, people that are looking to buy. We have such a shortage of homes. And another thing I'd like to add, my husband delivers to businesses around the other low-income project off of Depot, and they are constantly complaining about the crime that has increased around their businesses due to those projects. And we honestly don't want to see that come into our neighborhood. We are scared, and again, these are our investments, we have lived here, most of us, for 15 years. This is a huge concern. The traffic's going to be insane, and, I mean, why add to an already existing problem? Why make it bigger? And it is going to be a safety issue for children who have to walk home from Jimenez, and just families in general, like the traffic's going to get crazy.
Ms. Luna, the three minutes is up, thank you for your comments. We're going to try to see if we can get Ms. Blanca Garcia back on the line. Ms. Garcia? I could hear you, but I, I mean, I can hear some talking, but I can't, is there any way you can speak more clearly into the microphone? I could hear Sam. Ms. Garcia, maybe you could try turning your volume up. In the meantime, I'm going to move on to another speaker, and we'll try to come back to you. We have Jorge Martinez, followed by Joel Aguilera. Jorge Martinez, are you available?
Si.
There you go. Thank you.
Spanish.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
También estoy de acuerdo, oiga, esa construcción que están queriendo hacer, en el sentido de que va a haber, hemos pensado que va a haber muchos, podría haber muchos problemas, oiga, con los parqueaderos, había, hubiera, estaría viendo muchas discusiones la gente, y pueden pasar al rato por este, si no toman en cuenta lo que la gente le está haciendo saber, algún problema que surja más delante, ya que se hicieran esas viviendas, y entonces la gente llegaría al punto de que hasta se pondría de acuerdo y tendría que, este, poner hasta una demanda a la ciudad, si no hicieran, si no tomaran en cuenta lo que se le está haciendo saber. Entonces, yo, yo, este, por eso estoy tratando, oigan, que yo no estoy de acuerdo a que se haga esa construcción. No, no más los parqueaderos, oigan, cuando son de unas viviendas de low, este, es cuando pasan esas cosas. Entonces, este, mi, mi manera de ver las cosas, oiga, es de que no, no estoy de acuerdo, nuestros vecinos no están de acuerdo también a que se haga esas viviendas, oiga, y quisiera que lo tomaran muy en cuenta, oiga, y muy seriamente, de que no, tómennos en cuenta y de que no estamos de acuerdo a que esas construcciones se lleguen a realizar, oiga, porque estamos pagando mucho también de nuestras hogares aquí donde estamos viviendo, estamos haciendo pagos de nuestras casas, de nuestro hogar, y entonces enseguida notaríamos a gusto, oiga, nadie estaría a gusto, y tanto dinero que está pagando, los pagos de sus propiedades, y este, entonces todo eso sería en contra de la misma ciudad, de no tomar en cuenta lo que se le está haciendo ahorita saber de lo que puede ser más delante. Es todo lo que, en mi opinión, oiga. Gracias.
I'll let you translate.
So Mr. Martinez shared his position in regards to not being against the construction of these houses. He talked about the problem, about the parking, and he would talk about suing the city of Santa Maria if their demands are not met. And the neighbors and him are not, do not agree on this. He shared that he paid a lot for the houses they own, and that wouldn't be, they want to be comfortable and okay in their houses. That's pretty much.
And, and he also said that low-income residents bring problems.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
I believe he had an issue with it being low-income, having this property adjacent to their neighborhood being low-income.
Yeah, he didn't, yeah, he mentioned that low-income, didn't address the, what was the problem with it, but he talked about low-income, that's right.
Okay, thank you. And our final speaker, well, we'll speak with Joel Aguilera first, and then we'll try to see if Ms. Garcia can get on the line.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, we can hear you. Thank you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I share the same concerns of the rest of the residents. I just wanted to, I wanted to speak to the fact that I have contacted St. Clair Apartments regarding the parking and the fact that there is too many residents in one unit, and nothing has been done. My concern, one of my concerns is it'll be the same problem that I will be calling this new complex, and if nothing will happen, that's just one of my concerns that wasn't brought up, obviously, you know. I'm very concerned about this complex affecting the value, security, sorry, safety, and yeah, just impacting my, or my, you know, stay here in a negative way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilera. We're going to give Ms. Garcia one more try here, and see if we can get her online. Ms. Garcia? You are unmuted. I can hear you, I can hear noise, like, I could hear speaking. Unmute your microphone? We'll give it one more shot. I see you're unmuted. Can you speak? I'm sorry, we're not hearing anything. Possibly provide some written communications this evening or in the morning via email, and we'll forward along to the city council. Thank you. That concludes the remainder of the speakers for the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any requests, any written correspondence?
Yes, I addressed those.
You did?
Prior to the, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
I can-
We're all going to be glad when COVID is over, I think.
We received written communications from the appellant, and on behalf of the residents at Pacific Crest Estates. Let's see, also from Joel Paz, Brandon Jimenez, Erica Martinez, Jorge Martinez.
Okay. So I'll bring this, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring this item back to the council for any discussion and a motion. Oh, Mr. Eng?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I-
You guys speak fast.
Sorry, Shannon.
I should have provided additional clarifications in regards to a density bonus law that would impact your deliberations here. This is a density bonus project, and density bonus is a state mandate that grants an applicant additional housing units or increased density in exchange for affordable units. A developer that meets the requirements of the state law is entitled to receive the density bonus and other benefits as a matter of right, meaning it's, the applicant has a right- meaning it's, the applicant has a right to density if they meet the state requirements. There's also additional requirements about the maximum number of parking spaces that we can ask from the developer. And it's, it's one space for studios, one space for one bedrooms, two spaces for two bedrooms, two spaces for three bedrooms, and 2.5 spaces for four bedrooms. That's the maximum that we can ask for a density bonus project by state law.
Did the state tell you how you park a half a car? And I'm being sarcastic, I realize.
Right.
How long has this been zoned high density?
I don't have an exact date, but it's about 15 years.
About 15 years. Okay. Yes, Ms. Soto.
I guess my next question is, I mean, based on what Mr. Eng just said, is there anything that we can do about the parking?
Go ahead.
Assistant Soto, the maximum, that's the maximum I just laid out. That's per state law, so no.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
So, what you just indicated to us, do we have the option to deny the project? Or not, not even make a motion on it? I mean, the state doesn't overrule us, do they?
He's looking at...
Actually, the answer is yes. The state did overrule you. You don't have discretion. And if you want to deny this, we'll have to continue the action and bring back a resolution with findings to support that. Mr. Eng and myself don't believe that there's adequate findings to be able to deny the project. Now, you can ask for concessions, you can do some other things. This project cannot be denied by state law based on the design as provided.
So where do the residents have their rights?
They don't.
They don't?
Flat out. The state, the state has made a determination that people in local jurisdictions have been limiting low-income projects for too long based on economic and other factors, and therefore, they have removed the discretion from the city on these types of issues.
And it's only going to get worse.
It's only going to get worse?
Yeah.
It's only going to get worse?
I don't...
I know it's not your fault.
No, I'm not even accepting the blame, but in this case, the state doesn't care.
No, they don't. And this is where these residents that have paid for their residence or are paying taxes don't have any recourse to protecting their own private and personal property in regards to this. And I think that is BS.
Did you have a question for Mr. Eng?
Nope, he answered it.
Oh, okay.
He answered it.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, I, you know, there are two sides. From one side, we talk about traffic, parking, and, you know, which is a big issue, and was one of the most requested during my time in talking with my community. But also, one of the other issues is housing, low-income housing. We live in a city where we can end up living two, three families in one house because it's expensive to own a house and pay the bills and pay the rent. So, I would say that housing ended up being priority, because if we allowed a low-income, somebody who has low income, which is a good part of our community, to have a place, a personal and private place where they can raise their kids and their families, I think that overall the parking issue, I mean, we can find other ways to transport, we can find other ways to figure that out. So, I don't mean, you know, that's, it's interesting that the state overall this decision. And that's what I think, I think that this project will bring an opportunity for a community, low-income community, to own their own space without having to be a lot of families in one spot.
Ms. Soto?
Mine's, I'm going back to a question, my apologies, but this isn't low-income housing, this is affordable housing, correct? And can you please explain to us and the audience the difference accordance, in accordance to state law and development?
This is Paul Fortino. Jennifer actually worked for me on this particular property.
Mr. Spagnito, we unfortunately can't hear any more comments from the public at this time. It's council deliberations. So, thank you. I will unmute you.
Paul Fortino, I'm with the developer.
That's okay. Thank you. The council, it's in the council's hands at this point.
Okay, Mr. Eng?
Assistant Soto, so this is an affordable housing project, and what, there's affordable with the definition that's defined, and meaning, so the applicant has mentioned that, that there are some qualifiers for it to be affordable, and there are specific income categories that, that, so I'm just going to describe, or what's the information that's been provided. Forty percent of the units will be at or below 60% AMI, that's low income. And then 30% will be at 50% AMI, area meeting income, very low. 20% will be at 40% AMI, very low. 10% will be at 30% AMI, extremely low. So, there's a couple of categories of low-income households that would be served by this project.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, any discussion with the council and/or a motion? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I tend to agree with some of the residents that called in that purchased their property many years ago. The number 15 years was mentioned, I think, a couple of times. And when they purchased their homes, for whatever reason, whether they didn't pay attention, or whether it wasn't zoned that way then, or whatever, they didn't anticipate living next to a large multi-family unit complex, also known as apartment complex. So, I don't know what it would be like to have a, a, a project presented that would be single-family dwellings that would cover the same kind of, if there is such a thing, to cover the same kind of requirements. But I really don't blame these people for having this, these concerns, or having so many people living in the area. And I would, at this point in time, tend to think that I would not be in favor of this, even though our esteemed attorney says that we have the same. I understand the state's power here, but I'm inclined to side with some of these people that are concerned about their own personal property and the monetary loss that they anticipate having, or the monetary concerns that they have. So, I plan on siding with these people that are calling in against the project at this point in time.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution denying the appeal and affirming the Planning Commission's adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and approval of the Centennial Garden Apartments Plan Development Permit at the southwest corner of West Battles Road and South DeKalb Street.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to deny the appeal. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Councilmember Cordero?
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a, excuse me, first, before we move on, if there are interested individuals who wish to speak on this next item, please be prepared to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, or press star nine by telephone to be called on in the order received. The council will now receive a presentation of the Santa Maria Active Transportation Plan from GHD Consultant Kendra Ramsey, and consider approval of the proposed plan. And I'm going to... Go ahead, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry.
Are you talking to me now?
Yes, you're on.
I am, I'm honored. I get direction from you. So, I believe introductions are to be made by Principal Civil Engineer, Mr. Rideo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, residents of City Santa Maria. My name is Eric Rideo, and I work in the Engineering Division of the Public Works Department for the city. It is with great pleasure that we are bringing forth the city's first-ever active transportation plan before City Council for adoption this evening. After a two-year process of data gathering, and analysis, community outreach, and numerous stakeholder and public meetings and events, we have a document that reflects the needs and desires of the community with regards to promoting safe, active transportation through increased bicycle and walking transport throughout the city. This plan is just the starting point for the work that we hope to see in this community. It is not only a document that summarizes data and input from residents, but it gives some practical applications of how we can move forward with specific projects and program ideas. The timing of the plan is good in that the city is concurrently working on its general plan update, which is coming in the near future. I would like to recognize some key members. Christopher Petro, who's one of our engineers in the department, spent many hours managing and guiding this effort with the help of our consultant, GHD. His leadership and charisma were key in keeping the plan on track and on schedule. I would also like to recognize Caltrans, specifically Hannah Makesteb. Hannah was the Caltrans staff member that oversaw the grant provided by the state for the city. She's been supportive and encouraging of the plan over the last two years. So finally, I would like to introduce Kendra Ramsey, who will be presenting a summary of the details of the plan for you this evening prior to adoption of this plan. Kendra is a transportation project manager for GHD, and has worked with many agencies throughout California on development of such plans. At the end of the presentation, both Kendra and I will be available to answer any questions you may have. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Kendra. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Eric. Let me make sure I'm sharing my screen here.
Kendra, I just gave you control of the screen, so if you can see that, then you can move the slides.
Great, thank you so much. Let me just, great. So, as Eric mentioned, my name is Kendra Ramsey. I work for GHD, a transportation consulting firm, and we really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the Santa Maria community about this project. It has been very great to work with the Santa Maria community to develop this project over the past few years. So, I will just go dive right in and give you some background information, go over how we developed the plan, and then give you some plan highlights. So, let me, oh, there we go. Okay, so, project background. An active transportation plan, the type of plan we're asking to be considered for adoption today, creates a network of bicycle and transportation facilities which are recommended for the city. And so, we look at what the current conditions are in the city. We ask residents, business owners, community organizations, what their comments are on existing conditions, and through those comments and data, we identify recommendations for how to improve transportation for all users, keeping in mind both people walking, biking, taking transit, and then the folks that are driving and conducting business using vehicles on the road as well. The Santa Maria Active Transportation Plan was funded by a Caltrans grant awarded in 2018. And we've been working on it for about two years, and overall recommend strategic improvements throughout the city to create more opportunities for people to walk and bike who choose to do so. So, the objectives are to create low-stress connections, and what I mean by that is that a normal person would feel comfortable walking or biking different places throughout the city to get to their daily destinations. We're looking at the previous projects that have been identified for bicycle transportation and refining those based on current needs, identifying ways to be cost-effective, improvements, looking to meet federal and state objectives, both in terms of the types of facilities proposed and how they impact air quality considerations, supporting sustainability, and supporting equity initiatives in terms of making sure that people throughout the community have access to these facilities. And one of the ultimate goals of the plan is also to set the city up to successfully seek grant applications or grant opportunities in the future to help fund these projects, because we know that Santa Maria, like practically every other city in the state and the country, has a limited budget, and we can't do every project immediately that we want. So, those grants are very important. So, as Eric mentioned, we had key project team members, the City of Santa Maria, many individuals contributed to the plan. Consultant team consisted of my firm, GHD, as well as Tool Design Group, and then we had guidance from Caltrans as well. I did also want to mention the significant community outreach that we conducted during this plan. It is very important for active transportation to understand what the community wants and needs, how they'd like to get where they need to go. So, we did have a project website. We had an interactive mapping tool where residents were able to put location-specific comments, and we reviewed those comments, and we were developing the recommendations. We had a stakeholder advisory group that I'll get into more in a minute. We conducted a lengthy community survey, both online and paper copy that we distributed at various community events. We got 351 responses, and 250 of those were in Spanish. We had several opportunities to meet with the community in person before the pandemic happened. Open Street Santa Maria, there was a community services fair, and also a bicycle tour with some of the folks that are cyclists as well. And in addition, we conducted several community workshops, both in person and then, more recently, online. So, our stakeholder advisory group, we typically had between, I'd say, 15 and 30 people attending, and so these were at first in-person and then online meetings, which allowed us to present work to date on the project and get feedback from different community groups, as you see represented here. We also shared information via email to these groups to comment as well, and asked them to share it with their constituencies. So now, I'll get a little bit into the data we looked at. And so, one of the key considerations for active transportation is where are people experiencing collisions today? Where might it be considered less safe and less comfortable for people to walk and bike? And so, this map shows you that the areas, as they get more towards red, experience more collisions. You all know, these are, you know, some of the more heavily trafficked roadways, they're higher speed, more vehicles, and many of them don't have dedicated bicycle facilities. There we go. We looked at where facilities are currently located. So, this map depicts those current facilities with the blue being your normal typical bicycle. facilities with the blue being your normal typical bike lane, green being those shared-use off-road paths, and the purple being a bike route which is signed and sometimes has a little symbol in the roadway. And so you see that there are, you know, main, main areas in the city that are less connected than others, and so these were some of the conditions we looked to remedy. So this is just a graphic depicting the different types of facilities. You'll see across the bottom, it goes from the most comfortable being an off-road, a separated path, which takes up more room but does allow lots of people to feel comfortable biking, all the way over to, on the right hand, you'll see the other end of the spectrum, which is a roadway that has signage striping for vehicles only and no dedicated space for bicyclists. So it kind of helps you see the different range of facilities available and the different places where they may be appropriate, and so we did try to consider these as we were developing the plan. And so thinking about those types of facilities, we mapped out the current network and looked at how stressful riding a bicycle might be throughout the city. And so as you'll see here, this map shows basically it's categorized by a bunch of different data points, so roadway width, the speed of the cars, the types of the bicycle facilities, so if it's a bike lane or an off-road path or no facility. And then we categorized with the red being sort of the facilities that fewer people would be comfortable on, and the green being the most comfortable that you may take your, you know, say your five-year-old with you on a bike on those roadways. And so you see here that a lot of the neighborhoods are comfortable for people of all ages and abilities, where you really come across the arterials, more heavily traveled streets that your typical family would probably not feel comfortable riding a bike on, and so that's kind of the current conditions we were looking at. We also looked at, using that roadway network, what types of destinations people could go to, because bicycle facilities, pedestrian facilities, the goal is that, that residents of Santa Maria can get to where they want to go. So the dots you see were different identified points of interest, so places like schools, shopping centers, employment centers, libraries, community facilities, and just looked at, the blue lines you'll see are connections between those areas using the lower-stress bicycle facilities. So it kind of gives you an idea of where there's better connectivity and where there isn't, and that helped us understand where, where there may be needs for new facilities. So using all those data points plus the input we received from the community and other constituents and working with the city and Caltrans, we developed recommendations for 27 miles of Class 1 bicycle paths. So those are paths separated from traffic with room for bicyclists and people walking. We have eight miles of Class 2, so your traditional bicycle lanes, mile and a half of buffered bicycle lanes, so that's a regular bike lane with usually a two-to-three-foot painted buffer on the edge to separate from traffic, and then a variety of bicycle routes and the new Class 4 separated bikeways. So that has a traditional bike lane with a small physical separation to help cars. Cars notice that there's, there's folks bicycling there and bicyclists feel a little bit safer that they have a separation from traffic. And so you'll see that the network sort of looks to fill in the gaps that are currently there, so connecting north-south, east-west, and providing sort of a backbone throughout the city for people to get to their destinations. And the red dots that you see are crossing improvements, which are typically for pedestrians, places that the community identified where they had challenges crossing today, maybe they felt unsafe or had a near miss, which can also be used by bicyclists trying to cross those roadways as well. This highlights just the facilities for pedestrians, so you'll see again a lot of crossing improvements, recommendations also for those Class 1 separated paths that people use for walking and biking, and a variety of, of traffic calming measures that were identified primarily through those community comments. I did want to highlight one important project, and that is the Active Santa Maria Safe Routes to School corridor improvements. So this set of projects were pulled from the higher priority project list developed in the plan and submitted for a grant to the Active Transportation Program Cycle 5, that application cycle was over the summer. And so this is a mix of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. It provides north-south and east-west connectivity and really provides an alternative to some of the higher-stress roadways that are currently being used and, and folks are seeing some collisions. So providing connectivity to a number of destinations. And so here's a, a graphic. You'll see across the top, there's a highlighted area with a few dotted lines, which are the proposed facilities and crossing treatments, east to west on Fessler, and then north to south, you'll see a few gap closures on Bradley, and then on Jones Street as well, closing a gap between facilities as well. And then all of these nice colored boxes are different destinations. You really see it does create some connectivity, both north-south and east-west. And this is just another version of that graphic that shows that two of the segments are designated as gap closures and two are really creating new routes for people trying to walk and bike in the city. And throughout the process of applying for this grant, we contacted, the city did a wonderful job contacting different, different organizations and getting letters of support, and these were all submitted with the application to the state, really showing the engagement of different community organizations, I believe SB Bike, Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, which has shops in, in Santa Maria, Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, the school district, as well as Coast, and the public health department all, all provided support letters. And so we'll be, um, those were all constituencies that were consulted on the plan and supported that grant application. So following up on that grant application, we do anticipate hearing from the state sometime between middle of February and, I believe, middle of April on their decision. And so hopefully that would be the first success story from this project. After that, there is another cycle of that same funding program anticipated to be available. And in 2022, there are also other funding programs such as the Highway Safety Improvement Program and California Office of Traffic Safety Grants, among many others. Projects can also be included in different current, if there was any road resurfacing, there's a lot of different low-cost ways that can be used for, for different project implementation. And basically, the plan outlines a lot of different projects that the city can, can seek funding for in the future, so it really sets up the city to have, have something ready if, if the opportunity does arise. So there are a number also of program recommendations, and so these programs would be different... I think the slides just advanced all on their own. I have a ghost in the computer, unfortunately, here.
Let me get it back for you, just a sec.
Sorry about that. I think my mouse might have... Anyway, I'll just, I'll just continue talking while we catch up, but a number of programs which help educate the community on pedestrian and bicycle safety. These can often be in schools, when schools are in session. They can also be done for adults in the community who may want to learn bicycle skills, to ride with traffic, to commute to their jobs. We have seen those in many communities. And there are also, there are also programs to, for example, adopt a trail, so getting volunteers to help keep trails safe and clean. Those are frequently used in different communities and help people fill ownership over those facilities. So lots of different programs that are, are outlined in the document as options for the city or any number of groups to take up in the future. It also includes an implementation plan which discusses how to consider prioritizing projects and how funding could be sought in the future. Impact to the community, we believe that this project, this plan, will help benefit the Santa Maria community. It updates the BikeWay master plan. It updates some of the Americans with Disabilities Act program. It integrates safe routes to school recommendations that help improve, recommend improvements to areas around schools. It involved a lot of community engagement. We spoke to many community members to understand their needs and established a list of projects to be included in future capital project programs. So our, our recommendation or request this evening would be that the City Council adopt a resolution recognizing the Santa Maria Active Transportation Plan as the city's guide for the planning of future active transportation projects. Approval of the resolution would make the city eligible to receive grant funding from future active transportation program offered by SB CAG, the State of California and the federal government. The city's 14% contribution to this, this project was expensed in 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 fiscal years, and no further funding is requested. And then I will turn it back over to Eric. I believe he might have some closing remarks.
Thank you, Kendra. At this time, we are open to any questions that you may have. Kendra will be on the line as well.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Cordero.
Yes, I believe one or both of you spoke about collisions, and that they were marked on one of the maps. Were you speaking only of collisions involving bicyclists, or these are collisions vehicle versus vehicle?
Pedestrians.
I believe the collisions involved pedestrians and bicyclists, so it's, it's not vehicle-to-vehicle unless a pedestrian or bicycle was impacted, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. That's what I thought. Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, first want to start by applauding our, our team here at the city of Santa Maria for guiding this process. I actually attended some of these community workshops last year, and it's been a two-year process now? And they've just been, um, they were really insightful, and the community input was, was great, so I just want to acknowledge that. And the website was so interactive, and, I mean, it was great, great work. My question is, now that we have this amazing plan in front of us, what, like, moving forward and thinking about next steps, how can we ensure that we actually see it come to fruition, right? Like, what's going to be, how aggressive is the city of Santa Maria going to be in, in, in trying to find grant funding to help us fulfill what's in this plan?
Thank you for your compliments, and, and, yeah, that's a very good question. Kendra alluded to, yeah, we, we, like many other agencies, are restricted by budget funds to pursue, to, to make some of these projects a reality, so pursuing grants has become more and more important these days, and our team has, over the years, increased the amount of grants that we are going after, including the ATP program, which is every two to three years. HSIP grants, we have currently two HSIP grants that we're working on that we've already been awarded to, so we're very aware of the funding options out there. That being said, utilizing GHD and other consultants that, that do this type of work will be, be an advantage, will be something that we, we need to leverage. We need to leverage some of our gas tax monies, some of our measure A monies to, to realize that, to bring some local funds. But more than that, with the, the document itself addressing programming ideas, and then one of the things that we really, realizing that these, these plans are, are in nature planning documents, we, we really wanted it to be a document that we could take and do, have a project focus, so have actual projects come out of it that, with estimates and that we could look to, to create projects, not just, not just ideas, but actual, well-thought-through projects that, you know, GHD is a, a national leader as far as having transportation engineers on staff, and so a lot of thought went into the type of projects that were recommended. So that's really something, if you, if you look at the document, the amount of projects that were recommended is extensive and is something that we'll be looking to as we look at applying for grants and doing our own projects in-house, so.
And I'm just amazed, um, the transportation plan, I mean, it does a good job at also highlighting, like, what, what's feasible to do in short term and then thinking also long term.
Right. Yes, so the, it does, it does prioritize the short term in the document, the appendix really then brings in more long-term focus, so the, the costs in there are, again, estimates, and of course, the bigger projects are, the more you can, economy of sale, you know, so but those are just somewhere to start for us, as far as giving us a good idea of, of how a big, how big a project could be or how much it'll cost. And this ATP grant that we applied for was about $5 million, so, and it encompasses, I think, two or three different project ideas out of the document itself.
Any questions? Any other questions from the council? I really thank you for a, a great report. It was easy reading and it was understandable, and, and I realize it takes a lot of money. People think you can just do this bike path by slapping some paint, you know, down the side of the road, and it's so much more intricate than that when you have to do the study and the needs. And, and I know little by little, we've been doing this in Santa Maria when we, when we resurface new streets and then we put in the bike lanes and everything, but I, I thought the report was very well done, so thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs. Ramsey.
Thank you.
Do we have any requests to speak?
Let me get to that. Madam Mayor, don't show any hands raised to speak on this item, but staff received one written communication from Cars Are Basic. Cars Are Basic expressing concerns that the plan is not based on a rational concept and is driven by dollars taken from road and repair taxes to deflect ongoing failures. Staff also received a written correspondence from David Dennis in support of the plan, saying it would lead to less traffic congestion, fewer miles traveled per vehicle, and reduce demand for parking. I don't show any speakers, but these communications were also emailed to the City Council, and copies were provided on the dais this evening regarding these. That's all I have.
Thank you. So I'll bring this back to the council for discussion and our motion.
I would like to make some comments.
Mr. Miskov? Oh, it's here. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I would like to, I'm excited about this project. I think this plan, I, I've been getting to know it since a couple of years ago, working with them, Open Streets, and personally, I've been, you know, bicycles is, is one of my passions, and remember one of our rides that we actually rode around downtown and talking about the, the areas that were hard to bike. So that, that was pretty interesting. I remember the first, the, the first time I rode my bike on Main Street for, kind of like, see what it's up, up in streets? Boy, I was almost ran over twice in, in a block, you know? But that gets me a perspective that Santa Maria needs to be more walkable, more bike-friendly, and find solutions to, you know, sometimes we use a car to go from our house to the store that is one block away, when we can walk, when we can commute with our, uh, bikes. that is one block away, when we can walk, when we can commute with our bicycle. I would love to go on my bicycle to work at an office at Hancock, but I don't feel really comfortable, and, you know, those, in the maps, I do agree. Those roads, those are the places where my friends that love biking, they say Carlos never go close to that part, and that shouldn't be like that. I mean, Santa Maria, it's a nice city. It would be great to go and visit all the restaurants, the businesses, and just have a nice day or have fun. So those are some of my comments, and I don't know if I could, I would like to put a motion to, for the approval of this Santa Maria Active Transportation Plan.
Second.
Okay, and I have, Mr. Cordero would like to discuss something.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to resurrect the comment from past council member Dr. Moats that had requested that when we do the painting on the streets, that they be green, if that's at all possible. I haven't forgotten his request for that because he had been writing someplace, and I don't know what the plan is, but I certainly hope that Dr. Moats gets his way and that we have green designations for the bicycle paths.
Did you note that, Mr. Rideo?
Yes, that's noted. In fact, the Blosser Road Diet Project that is, will be going out to construction in the next couple of months or out to bid for construction, does have some improvements to bike facilities, which will include the green, the green paint, so it'll be the first green paint in town, so.
On Dr. Moats' behalf, we thank you.
You have to say that slower.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Madam Kirk, could you please call a roll?
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. The next item will be a report by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. So the next meeting of the city council is February 2nd. We do anticipate a closed session before the meeting, so for you to have that on your calendars. And then the main item is we're returning with a user fee concept presentation based on the direction the council provided and looking at revenues, and this will be an opportunity to look at how we set our fees and what priorities the council has, and a discussion about that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo, should we start with you?
Sure, Madam Mayor, nothing to report.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Ms. Soto?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to highlight that the 48th anniversary of Roe versus Wade takes place this Friday, January 22nd. It's the landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision that made abortion legal here in the United States. Unfortunately, even though abortion has been legalized in this country, access is still not available for all people. People, despite, you know, again, this landmark Supreme Court case, still may not have access due to income, zip code, and racial healthcare disparities that may exist. And so as we look ahead into 2021 and into the future, you know, I'm eager and hopeful that, you know, now, rather than talking about protecting abortion care access, we can talk about expansion and really having true reproductive freedom in this country. And secondly, in that same spirit, I want to highlight and uplift the Women's March. Santa Maria will be having its Women's March this Saturday, January 23rd. It's going to be online, so our residents are welcome to tune in. We will be hosting it alongside the Santa Barbara Women's March organizers, and so it'll be a co-led event, where there's a great speaker lineup, and we invite our residents to tune in.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 12th, I attended a very important meeting in Shad Springer's office concerning a suspended Table A water, and learned a great deal there that we'll be discussing in the not-too-distant future in more depth. On the 17th, I had another COVID test, and the results aren't back yet. And on the 19th today, I did a little drive-by and spent quite a bit of time over in the project that we discussed this evening for the, over off of Babels. And I would like to acknowledge also what Ms. Waterfield mentioned earlier at the start of the meeting, recognizing and honoring a great American, that being Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
When are they getting your vaccine?
Thank you.
All these tests making so much noise for you.
I'm proud to tell you this is probably the last time in my life I'll ever not be old enough for something.
So now, how many tests now have you taken?
I think I've taken nine.
Nine, okay.
And they keep coming back negative. Maybe I'm doing it wrong.
January 6th, I attended the updated Santa Maria Key Leaders Call, and we talked about the COVID. On January 7th, I spoke with Karen Cruz Orduna on KUIT about the COVID, the New Year message that I did. Did the Vaccine Economic Update Confirmation with UCSB Economic Forecast Project. Attended the U.S. Mayoral Roundtable with the National League of Cities and the county legislative briefing later that day. Did January 8th, How COVID Is Affecting the Workforce Roundtable with California Cities. And I met Petra Gomez of the Santa Barbara Foundation. I had not met her yet since Kathy Seamus had left. And, oh, and on January 4th, 14th, rather, I did the speaking engagement for the Central Coast Community Energy, which was the Monterey Bay Energy that we joined, and we did the flip the switch. So we're now with them. We flipped the switch. This morning, did the Ben Hayes Show, and that is it. And we have, I was brought to my attention that on January 4th, we lost a Mr. Sorries, Mr. Herb Sorries, that worked for the city for a long time, and I was just, I was shocked. I had not seen that in the paper, and Mr. Stillwell brought that to my attention. So he will be missed by many. Our thoughts and our prayers go out to his family and friends. So any other comments from the dais? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Look at this.